At this time I would ask that everyone please silence all cell phones and other paging devices as they are distracting the others. The forty-eight hour notice as required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met. As notice of this meeting was emailed on November first, two thousand and twenty-one, published in the Esberry Park Press, the CoStar and the poster. A copy is placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and a copy is entitled the Borough's Board. Mr. Adento did call, he's gonna be running late, so he missed our executive. Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Fusa?
Here.
Mr. Cattelli?
Here.
Ms. Bernal?
Here.
Ms. Saracene is excused this evening, Ms. Leahy is excused this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Here.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Here.
And also present this evening, Mark Hittrich, Attorney to the Board, and Sam LeBachian, Board Engineer, and Christine Bell will be joining us a little bit later.
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution to read, may I?
Correct.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA ten colon four dash twelve permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and that therefore be resolved by the Board of Adjustment, the Borough of Borough Beach, the County of Miles, City of Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussions of and actions upon the hearing after specified subject matter. The general nature of the subject will be discussed is as follows. Item number one, five oh one Lake Terrace LLC tour claims notice litigation. It is anticipated that at this time the above stated subject matter will be in public. This resolution shall become effective immediately this eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-one. So make a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright, so let's go back.
I'm closing the recording, the live stream can't be stopped.
Was I named in that?
Um, wait till we get here, I can't stop.
Should I make a motion?
I can't stop the live stream. It's not right now, no, this is just a discussion. Put it in front of my seat. Camera's full on. It's because we opened the meeting and you can't pause, you can't pause it.
So Jay, you're doing the race you're doing? Is that what you're saying? I've been less than a month since I started doing the race, about two hours.
Hi.
Evening, how are you?
Meeting six or six thirty?
Six thirty. Six thirty, you're in the executive.
It said six.
Well, they're having a special executive session right now.
We thought that might be the case. And I told somebody it's six.
That's okay, have a seat, sit down, relax.
Want to get a cup of coffee? People don't get a cup of coffee.
So whereabouts your residence you have?
Uh, I'm on Fifth Avenue right by the casino.
Awesome, great, yeah, cool, that's a good spot, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Bradley Beach, beautiful, yeah, how long have you been?
In Bradley Beach, I used to rent during the summer time. Uh, but then I became a full-time resident in two thousand.
Oh, awesome, yeah, so before the new wave.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, when you were renting, where'd you live?
Uh, in various places.
Okay, so, cool, no, I meant like, if you were coming here for the summer, like, where were you?
Oh, in Carteret.
Oh, okay, cool.
Originally I came from Carteret, yeah.
So you got to see it grow up to where it is, yeah.
Oh, yeah, big time, I remember, uh, it was during the summertime when we'd come here. And it was funny, I had this real estate agent, uh, and, you know, I don't know how we got connected, but I told him, yeah, I'd be interested in buying a home in Bradley Beach one of these days, and this and that. Now, this is from back in the late seventies, eighties. You know, she would find, Lois would find me rentals and stuff like that that I went renting. She's like, you should be able to buy a house. And I'm like, Lois, really? Look at the town.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, ninety percent of businesses are boarded up, there's nothing here. Uh, you know, I say you talk to people, they're afraid to send their kids out. You know, because it's a town of nothing but wine homes.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that very long time ago, that's.
Yeah, that's what it was. Uh, put it this way, my daughters used to go to visit friends, it's like, where you going?
Right.
And, well, I'm gonna go and see someone, no, 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 where are you going, where does she live? You know, whether they're walking on their own, like, I'm driving.
Right, yeah, you don't want them on the bus.
Well, this was the way the town was years ago. And then we had, uh, who was it, Steve Schorr, what a big turnaround he put.
I was just gonna ask, what do you think that really was the catalyst?
Steve Schorr.
Okay, interesting, yeah, 'cause, you know, I think real estate investing is something I've always really kind of had a fond, like, you know, aspiration for, if you want to say. And it's just interesting, 'cause like, you look at Esberry Park, you look about the beach, Esberry was a little easier because to, you know, everyone says, oh, I'll tell everyone to Esberry, you know, and now I don't know what that's become, but.
Well, uh, you know, John Naples?
Yeah.
Okay, funny story with him, it was back in two thousand. And, uh, he bought this house on Ocean Avenue. And I was looking at it, and I'm like, is this guy's head screwed on?
Yeah, that's true.
No, if you looked at the house, it actually was like leaning to the east. It was actually leaning to one side. I mean, if you looked at it, you know, the guy bought this house. And the thing was, uh, I don't, yeah, he didn't have anywhere else to go, so he had to sort of like live there. And he dumped, I forget how many thousands of dollars to make it somewhat, you know. Uh, essential air conditioning, he dumped in there and everything while he was redesigning or figuring out what he wanted with the property. You know, and one day, uh, Steve Schorr and myself were talking about the mayor's plan B. And it just happened that we were across the street from his house. So Steve goes, he decides what you're gonna do with that property? He goes, yeah, I'm gonna build three condos and each one's gonna sell over a million dollars each. Steve looking at him, he said, what are you smoking? What are you drinking over there? And I'll tell you what.
Yeah, yeah, that's impressive, that's great.
Built the very first houses that were sold for over a million dollars.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, and nobody believed it.
Right, no, it's true, basically, 'cause I always try to mimic the same thing, right? So if you say, hey, thirty years ago, twenty-one years ago, you're thinking that way, and I'm like, all right, well, how do I think personally? You know, man, it's a similar fashion, like, I tell myself, like, Ocean County, it's like, ah, who's gonna go to Ocean County? In my opinion, like, Northern Ocean County, that, that, everyone that can't afford Mom's County right now, so I was lucky enough to buy a home. But like, most people my age were now just going down to Ocean County, Brick, uh, you know, wherever it is up there. That's, you have supply and demand, those people want a certain type of thing, and they'll start making more restaurants, and more bars, and more, you know, places to go, whatever, yeah, but. No, it's, I always find it very interesting.
Oh, put it this way, I couldn't believe when he said that I would be the first one to sell a house over a million dollars. The mayor didn't even believe it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, here's, here's an individual that would know what the.
Sure, right, talking about, yeah, yeah.
Put it this way, he builds nothing but the stick homes.
Right.
There's no pretty bad or anything, and everybody wants.
That's exactly, exactly, 'cause that's the problem with, even just saying new construction doesn't necessarily mean in my opinion that it's, uh, you're doing the best. Right now, so.
But look, put it this way, he moved.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
How are you doing?
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
Hey, how's it?
Good, how are you?
Have a seat, relax.
Pretty soon, keep in touch with all the guys.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Good evening, we are Tom and Alex. We are at five oh nine, we are gathering. Eighteen by six, the twenty-five foot ninety-foot line. We married in July two thousand and two, bought the house here in September two thousand and two. So we have been enjoying nineteen years of each life. We are blessed with five children, nine grandchildren. They all have loved us so much for visiting us. Some of them have slept on crib mattresses, I mean, they're so in the bed. But they are good, and now it's time to visit the public. So we cannot safely blow up beds next to a bed. We're tripping.
I get it, must've got away after.
Well, he had a condo here, he sold it.
It's difficult to balance, it's a good means we're going to safely get around the bed if we want. Since we have room, we're space, we're asking for it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, true. Uh, this is now? There you go. You come for the summertime?
It's cool. Put it this way, they, um, they put some of their stuff in there, they stay with me.
Oh, okay, well, that's nice, that's nice.
Some little guy, uh, my grandson's like five-year-old, he still took that train, college open. He courses his lane.
Okay, I like it, like, good for him. I'm a real old man, yeah, I like the.
I'm like, you're waking, what are you doing? I mean, I got Legos and I got dinosaur books and.
Cool, where do they live, uh, full-time?
Uh, my wife. When he comes down with something, I'm like, sure. And because the van wants houses, his house, he's only letting me stay there, cancel.
So he's the boss.
The next two generations have enjoyed Bradley Beach and the.
You know, I'm deep state of Steve, I'm charging you rights.
Imagine.
Yeah, I'm being a little vice, I'm letting you stay there because you're a nice guy.
He always pulls up there.
This is the earliest I've ever been there. I said, you think I should charge you rent for your man? He goes, no, no, that's mine.
That's fun. Well, that's nice that you get to have that, you know, you can.
Oh, put this way, he's got three, two little brothers.
That's, okay, is he the oldest? Is he the oldest?
He's the youngest.
Oh, wow, that's amazing. So he is the oldest.
That's how they know better, but, you know, they just go with the.
First of all, yeah. Jen said you got a room, Hard Rock, right?
Yeah.
How was that, I understand that?
It was good, it was nice, I've never stayed there before.
Cool.
Did you stay?
Yeah, tropical, yeah, yeah, but nothing, nothing crazy.
Yeah.
It's always, uh, interesting to see what goes on.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I feel like this year was like a little more mellow than usual.
So, yeah, two years ago, I was away, I was in Georgia or somewhere, and, yeah, I agree with you, 'cause normally it's just like, you know, a little, like, what it was like, eight, seven thirties, normally it would be like, like, you know, eight thirty, most people are supposed to be leaving, you know, but. I always regret seeing how, yeah, everyone, everyone acts, you know, like, you know.
Yeah.
Give me, uh, session.
Yeah.
How are we?
Good.
I'm standing in the back, I'm filling her chair.
Oh, excellent.
All right, pleasure, nice to meet you.
How are you?
I'm okay, how are you?
Good.
Okay?
What's going on at the house, everything good?
Today, I actually, um, jumped, I mean, everything, you know, back to normal. But I'm still, uh, you know, involved in the lawsuit. I, today, I had a deposition that started at ten o'clock in the morning, and we finished at four.
Oh, my God.
It was so long.
Yeah, that's also brutal, that's like, that's like, you know, that's.
Literally just, well, and they're just asking me questions, just words, exactly. I was just like.
Yeah, that's nice.
But, I mean, so I guess that's like, you know, at least that's progress, something that's happened.
Have you ever been deposed before?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, uh, every day, currently. I hear horror stories.
Yeah, I know, well, it was interesting because, you know, the only people I really had to talk to about was like people from Florida. Like, and they're like, it's like a little bit different situation.
Right, right, first of all, yeah. And did you ever get an attorney, or you just?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's quite fun, but did you like, how the house, how it really came out?
Yeah, I mean, it's like very nice now. Um, it's nice to be back, it's just a long process.
Embarrassed, isn't it? They're really upset.
They, uh, they were proud of their job setting for us, so I was in Atlantic City. I don't think they're going to do it again.
Well, at least he has that going on, yeah, 'cause you said he gets along with their health.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah, it looks easier.
My mom is a keeper, she has such a strong personality. I know.
How's he doing with the social evaluation stuff?
Uh, like, he's getting better, I think, most of the time. I mean, I don't think he was happy with me that I left him at home tonight. I literally picked him up, dropped him off.
He has his quality time?
No, there's no quality time. He's been, um, watching The Real Housewives. And he seems to like that, he seems to like reality TV, I think, because like, there's always people talking. So like, he feels like people are around. Um, I don't know what, I think he was watching The Real Housewives of the comic. And I don't, I just kinda like, I mean, they're all, who lives? Just that are coming first, so he's watching.
I tried it with my, my pup, but she never really cared, you know, like, you know, they said like the radio TV, that, that, she not get less, you know, everywhere.
No, I tried music, and even like someone said there's like these YouTube channels that are, uh, like, so big comment for dogs. And he just like howled even more of them. And people had said like, dogs like jazz and reggae and classical music.
Not bad.
Um, some reggae is okay. It was not like my friend's dog, like, you put jazz music on and he gets like just dopey, you're not like.
Really, we haven't tried that, yeah.
That's big on the jazz and all, but a big fan of reality TV, so.
As long as something works.
Right, he watched, uh, all of Top Chef and The Health Strategies and The Hills and Laguna Beach.
Awesome, I love it.
Because it's all stuff that, um, because like, my TV turns off after a certain amount of hours. Um, and like Netflix asks you, are you still watching? So like Hulu is the only thing that'll keep going.
That's cool, yeah. That's living the best life.
Watching The Real Housewives.
Are you talking about your dog?
Yeah.
Nice.
It's a good life, right?
It's quite, it's quite a life. People at work are talking about this whole Housewives thing.
I mean, I.
I heard it's an amalgamation of all of them, is that correct?
Well, I have only watched The Real Housewives of Salt Lake City, which is, I think, the newest one, um, that just came out. Because, so I had, I, I own a condo around my building, and last fall, my upstairs neighbors got their floors replaced, which was sitting on the end. So caused my.
That's a different zoning board conversation.
Um, so I spent a few months living on my soot, at least, over the winter. Great for anyone, but, uh, uh, my mom, I guess, watches The Real Housewives of Orange County. And, um, after Orange County is Salt Lake City, like, on TV. So I watch, I couldn't handle Orange County too much. But the Salt Lake City one was actually like, pretty interesting, there was like so much drama, it was so ridiculous.
So I hear they pull like a couple from each one, is what my secretary told me today. My admin system was telling me that, I guess there's this whole condemnation of all of them coming together.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I'm sure my dogs will probably watch it eventually, but it's on Hulu.
Whatever works.
It's funny, a few weeks, I guess last week, I went to interview Trent, and he had a question. He was like, something about, you know, reality TV show with like, how the movie's been up, it's like, that started in two thousand and six. And I was like, it's The Real Housewives, and everyone was like, how do you know that? I was like, because I just put on that season four when I left.
Oh, my God, that's hilarious.
So he's like binge watching, he's like, yeah.
So he, like, so I watched it in August. I had really, really bad separation anxiety. Um, it's one thing if you're hounding all day, like, you're in a house and you're already messed up, but like, I'm like, that's renewed. Um, and the. On TV, it's funny because I guess, hell, you know, it's like, oh, he's watching, he's like, no, he's like, he's like, you know, he really watches TV, eight hours a day. So.
Heck, he's up, he's up to par with all my folks. Hey, yeah.
What are you, uh, so, truly?
She's going with the.
Someone checked, I'm waiting.
I make a motion to re-close the executive session. Second?
I know, put it up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Pleasure to lead this, this, this session. Pleasure to lead this, 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 uh, United States of America, and to a republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time I would ask that everyone please silence all cell phones and other paging devices as they are distracting the others. The forty-eight hour notice as required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met. As notice of this meeting was emailed on November first, two thousand and twenty-one, published in the Esberry Park Press, the CoStar and the poster. A copy is placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and a copy is entitled the Borough's Board. Mr. Adento?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Fusa?
Here.
Mr. Cattelli?
Here.
Ms. Bernal?
Here.
Ms. Saracene is excused, Ms. Leahy is excused, Mr. Mayor?
Here.
And Chair Rosenberg.
Here.
And also present, Mark Hittrich, Attorney to the Board, Sam LeBachian, our Board Engineer, and Christine Bell, our Board Planner.
I'd like to make a statement, please. This meeting was recorded for transcript and purchase. No member of the public shall yell from the audience or speak out during, as it will disrupt the official record. Once the Board of Adjustment accepts service and application, the applicant will proceed to call evidence. The applicant or their attorney will first examine each witness. Next, members of the board will ask questions. Next, members of the board will ask questions and cross-examine witnesses. Finally, the members of the audience will touch cross-examining witnesses, asking questions where they don't see testimony given. This is not the time members of the audience will be giving testimony, present evidence and make comments. Once the applicant has finished presenting all evidence and all witnesses, any interested members of the audience will then make comments. Present, present evidence and testimony. There will be a five-minute timer for each audience member to speak, unless your questions, comments, not being presented. All members of the audience tend to give testimony as due under oath. The applicant must turn the cross-examining, upon your testimony. The board may also call witnesses in the non-own evidence as referenced to any application. It may require more than one hearing to dispute an application. The application will then carry to a future date, which will be announced at the inclusion of this hearing. The Board of Justices intend to adjourn the meeting on a reasonable hour. Therefore, under no circumstance will the witness be called by testimony at ten p.m. Thank you. Resolutions to be memorialized?
Uh, first we have the minutes from
Oh, minutes.
The minutes from October twenty-first.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Uh, Mr. Ivento.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Fusco.
Yes.
Mr. Patelli.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Brunel.
Yes.
And Sheriff Rosenberg. Uh, the first resolution to be memorialized is Resolution twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one dash twenty. Approval of both variances for an addition. Mark and Follow Run, uh, block twenty, lot ten, six oh two Ocean Club Avenue. If I have one of those members eligible to make a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Fusco.
Yes.
Ms. Brunel. Yes. Mr. Patelli.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Sheriff Rosenberg. Sheriff Rosenberg.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. Approval of both variances for an addition. Mark and Follow Run, uh, block forty-nine, lot twelve, five oh seven Central Avenue. Do you have a motion?
I, I make a motion to move, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. Mark and Follow Run, block forty-nine, twelve, five oh seven Central Avenue.
Second.
My second.
Mr. Wade. Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Fusco.
Yes.
Mr. Ivento.
Yes.
Mr. Patelli.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And Sheriff Rosenberg.
Yes. Application, first application, Dennis and Sharon Luba. Both variants for second floor balcony with roof over first floor porch. Application seeking both variants and approval of proposed placement of a listing deck on the west side. Adorned closed porches along Bradley Boulevard, which require a week. Proposed covered upper porch, side yard setback on the west side and elevated deck located inside yard.
Hello, good evening, my name is Dennis Luba. Uh, my wife and I purchased a house on-
Just a little bit, wait one sec. Are you going to testify? Is your wife going to testify?
No, I am.
Just you.
Alright, so. Good evening, Mr. Luba. So, uh, we'll, we'll swear both of you in case you want to add something.
Okay.
Okay? And then, uh, is it Mr. Mencler, is that?
No, Dennis Roberts, Rocon.
Dennis Roberts. I'm sorry, and you what?
Rocon, R O C E L N.
Okay, Mr. Roberts. Well, if you'd also raise your right hand along with Ms. Bell and Mr. Abakian, you swear firmly to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth tonight. Proceed.
I do.
Thank you.
You do. Okay. Um, we purchased a home on six hundred Bradley Boulevard with the intention of renovating it, upgrading it. It had been vacant for a while and on the market for a while. And the idea was to enhance the house to take advantage of the lake and its location without disrupting the neighborhood or causing any, uh, being, being obviously, uh, different than our surrounding neighborhoods. The house was, uh, in badly need of renovation and, um, our intention is to live in the house and hopefully retire to the house and continue to stay there in the Bradley Beach Boulevard area. So, um, the goal was to put the decks on the house to take advantage of the lake view. The second floor deck, uh, was lacking covering over the top floor, exposed to a lot of sunlight and we were hoping to put or asking to put the roof over that second deck to provide shelter, uh, permanent shelter over that particular space. Um, and, uh, maybe a little bit more comfortable during daytime hours.
Any questions before we move on?
I have one. She did some work on the house, I, I just passed by the house to look at it. You've done some work on this house already, correct?
Yes.
You got permits to do that work?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and, and you closed out all those permits?
Yes, we did.
You see dark CO.
You have a CO?
Yes.
The reason that I raise this, you don't have a front walkway or a sidewalk. I'm wondering how you got a CO without a walkway. All right, you just step off in the grass.
Correct. Well, we were, we've been landscaping the outside of the house. Our, our goal is to put the walk-in and in fact, we've, we've, uh, spoken to Dennis about a project going forward and, uh, also an additional contractor to look at and get some first aid. But nothing was mentioned when we got a CO.
All right, this one. Is there sidewalks on this side of the block?
There's sidewalks around the property, it's a corner property with sidewalks on both sides.
It's, it's the in breast, e breast.
Right.
Okay.
I, I'd like to, uh, put-
One, one person at the time.
Yep.
Any other questions? But the second floor deck is covered is, is not allowed in the borough of Bradley Beach, correct?
Right, well, that's why I think you're here.
Not when we apply for it, right? When we apply for it.
That's always been.
It's always been that.
So that's why you're, you're seeking.
Yes, you're trying to get. You want to make sure you know that.
We bought the house in twenty twenty and have moved in in April of twenty twenty-one. After the work was depleted, we were told to put on the, the roof over the second story deck and we did. So now we're applying for that again.
So it's ready now?
Yeah, everything's-
Everything is done.
It's done except for this roof.
And, and you're asking about the back deck too, right?
No.
No. Side deck. Can I clear that out?
Yeah, the builder has all the pictures and everything for you.
It's a corner lot, so I'll be-
Wait a second. Number four, you're proposing a side setback on the west side. Alright, so that's only for the, for this piece of your building. I was trying to understand what, what was up with the back deck. There's a little s- kind of scoop porch on the back.
Yeah, that, that was there.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
That was just a replacement.
Okay.
That's standing, as it is.
That's correct.
Okay.
Absolutely, it's completed and done.
The only thing you really hear then for is that covered porch.
Right.
On the second floor, yes.
Anybody else on the board? And the general public? Come up to the, come up to the dais and state your name and address.
My, my name is Hen- Henry Machos and, um, I live at, uh, two oh nine Third Avenue.
Can you spell your last name, sir?
M A C H O S.
This is your, your question of the, the act.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was just a, uh, I could express my views.
No, your views not yet.
Not yet, okay, I'm sorry.
That's questions only for the act. No other questions in the audience? Nah, you could, nah, you could leave the building.
So I would like to introduce Dennis Roberts of Rocon, who took us through this project from the very beginning. Walked us through it, uh, for the various aspects of plumbing, electric, construction, finishing. So, uh, CEO, or we obviously make it.
Very good, thank you. Again, Dennis Roberts from Rocon. So, so we have a builder, um, there's been some confusion when the engineer did the review apparently of our application. He noted things that were already done and approved. CEO, the only thing we are here for is this roof right here. Everything else has been done, CO'd and completed. The, um, we had originally, back in November, a year ago, we had approved for this. We actually had zoning approval. And it was rescinded after we started the, you know, our process. We actually had approval and it was rescinded back. Um, not sure how, uh, you know, our architect, we had investigated it. This, um, everything was in compliance that we knew when we submitted the original permit. And we received approval, uh, just as we thought we would. But subsequently to the permit being issued, they rescinded it. We had amended drawing and took out just this roof. And our project went forward without the roof because we didn't want any further delays at that time. But our, our architect and us, uh, we all felt that this was in compliance with the, your requirements at that time. It wasn't until, I believe it was May, that you changed an ordinance that may have not permitted this second floor roofing. It's also somewhat, um, I think there's somewhat confusion as to how that ordinance is written, at least from my perspective. That, you know, of what this is called, balcony, deck, things like that. So I think that, that might rise to some of the confusion. Regardless of that fact, as I said, everything here is done. All we want to do is put this roof over this porch right here. That's it. That's all we're here for. That's all this was about. This porch over this roof on this second floor balcony facing the lake. You know, as I said, we had approval originally, we went, we did whatever they asked so that we could get our permit to move forward with everything else. We didn't agree with the determination after we had the approval, but it was what it was and we had to move forward. Um, the client has gone through, obviously, all this time and money that we've spent to get to this point today with escrows and fees and everything else, you know, to put this, this second floor roof over this balcony or deck, whatever you want to call it. But, um, I wanted that to be clear, I don't know if the engineer had any questions or concerns. We did have a conversation with him subsequent to getting the report. So I think that was cleared up as to what some of the items were on his list and his review. And I think we're all on the same page now, if I'm not mistaken. So that's all this is about, second floor roof over this small portion.
Can you give the, some information about dimensions?
Um. I don't know if I have the actual dimension of that porch only. It might be in haptification, but I'm not sure.
Well, I know, I know some, okay, there's no questions on our part, um, but we received the application in two thousand and twenty-one under the new ordinance, they actually were given zoning approval from the zoning officer in two thousand and twenty.
So we have that in writing?
Uh, we were given permits, so the permits were not given in our original, uh, application of the applicant, but since then we have been given.
So we don't have the original, where's, where's accepted?
Zoning approval? I have already.
So, yeah, it wa- it was approved by the zoning officer prior.
Two thousand and twenty.
And two thousand and twenty.
So we didn't need a zoning, but did you get a permit at that point?
Yes, sir, but they rescinded it. They asked us to, they said timeout. We think that you're, we're not going to be able, they couldn't show us something in writing that said it wasn't allowed, but they said it's not going to be allowed or something, we could never get a straight answer. But they said for you to get a permit, you need to take this roof off of here. So we met with them, we had, I had my architect, we're on the third zoning guy now in town, so that, I know that ship has sailed, but we met with them and there was a lot of confusion, a lot, you know, no one really wanted to say yes or no or what. So we gave up. We said, okay, we need our permit, we have to start, we're going to pull the roof off and we'll, you know, we'll come see you another day or figure it out, or we'll edit as we get into the project, try to figure it out, but we could never get an answer as to why we had zoning approval and then it was rescinded.
So to us, it was the way we got the application when the, uh, our letter was written, it was, the zoning officer had approved it to the old ordinance. And when we received the package, the new ordinance had already passed.
So that's the only paperwork we go by.
And that's what, yeah, I'm just saying what the, over here.
Well, Mr. Rosenberg, we get, we should have gotten approval before you changed the ordinance. That's what, you understand what I'm saying? That we submitted originally before you changed that ordinance. And then they rescinded it and the ordinance hadn't passed until, I believe it was May.
Mr. Kicker, can I ask you a question on this?
Sure.
For years, we have rejected covered porches, decks, whatever terminology is on the second floor. And was part of the zoning, is it, is it the issue of that confusion about the word deck versus porch versus platform versus whatever?
I don't know. But all I can, all I, I can't answer that. All I can advise the board is that we have an application that's before the board.
I understand.
So whatever the history was, there's an application before the board and I don't think there's any question that a variance is reported, yes. So I think-
The variance is required because of the, but the roof is approved, the roof is allowed. By the ordinance?
Or no?
It's not allowed.
No.
And we were consistent for-
For years?
For years. I mean, this board has been consistent, you go back in history for a long time. In the second floor, porches, balconies, whatever.
I mean, I can't speak to history about what happened with the zoning officer.
But we have a ti- we have a timeline where it was approved on the prior ordinance, which was accordingly, okay. And then it got rescinded.
It got rescinded.
By a new law, by a new ordinance after the fact.
And they're be- they're before the jurisdiction of this board based on the current plans and the current ordinance.
So they got caught, so they kind of got caught in a, a world where. A lot of that term.
I have two questions, hopefully either, either of our professionals can clear this up. Point four on variances and waivers. A side setback of four point five feet on the west side. How, where, where are we, what is the issue? Point two, what, what are we looking?
Sir, we, I don't know what you're referring to on this, but we-
You saw what the site plan said. No, I'm talking about the engineers.
No, listen, that's on the, the west side lot line, they're going four and a half feet to that there.
How is that only four and a half feet to the?
No, no, you're on the side of the house, the side, it's corner of the house.
Okay, it's a corner of the there. Is that, is that close to the street to the, to the side lot line?
No. And we are seeking, we are not seeking that variance, you understand that? You understand that's not in play right now?
Put, put your finger on where this four point five feet is. On that.
You're talking about the west side?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, remember this, this house is on a corner.
I got you.
There, there's a deck that's, that's on or near green.
Yes.
But again, this is, this is not in play for this, this is not part of this meeting.
Well, it's on my paper.
I understand that, sir, but he can straighten it out again for me.
Yeah, so like I said, so that was approved by the zoning officer prior to two thousand and twenty.
Alright, that's fine. So then as a ma- mark that as a matter of law, are, are they entitled to do what they, what they planned on doing, what they submitted as a title submission, when the zoning officer allowed it? Or should they be before us because they got caught in a, in a, a never, never one? And so, to me, it's just a legal question. I know they're here before us right now. Right. So this is not, this is not an appeal of the zoning officer's decision. Okay. So now that they're not appealing the zoning officer's decision, they've made an application to this board for variance approval.
If I may, I mean, if he had, he had the approval to do what we needed to do. God forbid, if, but he could have done it in a week and built the whole thing, it would have been done, right? We wouldn't be here now asking for the roof because it was approved, we were following the process. Then because of timing, pandemic, whatever you want to talk about, it got delayed. And Dennis said, hey, we're going to move forward, we'll finish the house, get you in it, because we were living in a apartment and that, that. And we'll come back and satisfy the borough, whatever they need to get done.
But it's your testimony that you have a stamped approved drawing with a roof on it.
Sir, I have zoning approval. I have plans with zoning approval stamped, but they rescinded it and said that they would not let us move forward. I mean, your professional can testify to that.
Those, th- those facts are not in dispute. I'm, I'm not disputing. I'm not disputing. I'm just trying to get it all right. So somebody stamped something and said, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
And because you guys slowed down, they pulled it back.
No, 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 no. We did not slow down.
Well, I'm not saying that. I don't agree with that. It, it didn't tie the lamps and then somebody pulled it back.
Change. Yes.
Due to a change in the law.
But the law hadn't been, hadn't been changed yet. This was just supposition. This was, I think it's going to happen, so we're not going to let you do this. That's exactly the words that we heard.
For years, we haven't been given second floor covered porches for.
Again, but if you read your, if you read your codes, it's, it's not clear anyway, even today.
It's not, it's not because of the terminology.
That's correct, the terminology is.
We've been down that road before.
But that's a whole nother conversation.
So I, so I think it's, it's clear based on testimony presented, what the history was and what happened. And the board has heard that.
Okay.
The board has heard that. The board has heard that. I, I think we need to get to, now that, now that we're here, what's the justification for the variance approval? The roof, as you're hearing now.
Well, we've pretty much stated our case. And that, that's it. That's all, that's all we're looking for and.
I mean, nothing's changed on the design. I mean, it's still the same design, it just was not completed because we wanted to get in the house.
There's no detriment whatsoever to add the roof to our destruction that we have. So, you know, I know that, this is what the house looks like today, okay? This is the roof that we want to put, you saw in the drawings subsequent. And I just drove down the street, that block, you know, what you have on second floor. I know, I know you probably know that, but, I mean, it's been a little frustrating to, to deal with what we've been going through and the cost and the time, you know, as you can imagine.
So one of the things, I think the board is going to want to hear, the public is going to know, does that have any impact on the neighbors' views, anyone's views?
No, sir, there's, the cost is, it's no more lock coverage, no more, because we have this deck here, it, it doesn't affect anyone's views at all. Everyone else is looking to the lake. They're on the corner, there's no one near them. It affects no one whatsoever. It just gives them some cover on this porch, that's it.
Can you give, give us an idea of what size you're looking at?
I think the, I think it's maybe.
Nine by twelve, I think?
Yes, that big, right. I'm going to guess a little bit smaller, maybe eight, eight by ten, eight by twelve. It just, you know, we feel that also, we'll just finish off. They put a lot of money into the home, we've got tons of compliments from the neighborhood and the neighbors and it just helped finish off what the elevation will look like.
In fact, one of our neighbors, finally, who's going to step up to the podium and talk to you before. They'll all get their chance. Any other questions in the board for the building?
Yeah.
Go ahead, lift it up.
I have one question, the bottom left hand house.
I'm sorry, she's asking me something.
Yeah, your, your building permit block plan that is similar.
So it's maybe nine by twelve, thirty, I guess?
Because it's going directly over this porch, correct?
Part of that porch, right.
So it's only part of that porch?
Yeah. It's roughly this size, yep.
So it's not eight, so it's.
I think I said eight by twelve. Somebody did like nine by twelve.
Yeah, like nine by twelve.
This is, yeah. Just a question on, on the bottom left house. It appears that that house has a covered porch on the second, third floor. And if I'm not mistaken, on the back of the house as well?
I don't know the back of the house, sir. But yes, it's, you have second floor and third floor. Copy.
And Chris, do it. And then the timeframe that we.
Given.
For it to have a covered porch.
That house was just completed, just completed.
Is that a hard cover or a cover roof?
They're all hard. Green roof, yes.
Anybody else in the board?
Mr. Block, I know there's some rule about side yards, front yards, and when you're on the corner, can you illuminate that?
So the frontage on this property are.
Bradley Boulevard.
Bradley Boulevard and the stretch of the stretch lane, right? Yeah, those are the two frontages. So because you're a corner lot, you don't have one frontage, they treat it as two frontages.
So this is really not a side yard?
So that's, that means a front door. Right.
Okay.
Right.
Any other questions for the builder, for the audience? Questions from the builder? Any general questions from the board? General, general, questions or comments from the audience? Now you come up. Give me sworn answer.
State your name and address and elsewhere you live.
On the head of Lake House. On two O nine third Avenue.
Raise your right hand, please, sir, to swear a firm, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, I live at two O nine third, but I own property at six O one Burlington, which is on Pacific. And we, we share a border on Pacific. He's on Bradley Boulevard and Pacific and I'm on Burlington and Pacific. And I owned the house there for like probably thirty-five years or so. But, and I see what happened, you know, the changes over the years everywhere, you know? But I can tell you that, you know, I, I stand here and I support the approval of this variance for the improvement of, of the deck or the upper porch. I think, I think it's an improvement. I think that Dennis has done a great job with that house. And again, I've seen, since Sandy, what it's gone, what happened and, and then what it turned into now. And I think he's got a bug beyond to make the house nice. And, you know, I think that the, this improvement, if you ride down Bradley Boulevard, it would complete the house. If you ride down now, you know, it would look better. And when you come up Main Street, you turn, it's one of the first things you see. So I think, I think it would be. So the bottom line, I approve it and, and, and I, and I think he's done the right thing for Bradley Beach. And I, I think Bradley Beach, you know, would hopefully do the right thing for him.
Thank you. Anybody else in the general public? I can make a final statement, Mr. Rosenberg?
No, like I said, we, we're looking forward to living there for quite some time and making that our home. And hopefully you'll consider our application for, or now. Whatever one of you is.
Anybody else in the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application as presented. It was kind of based on, just based the testimony of the added approval, approval was taken away, rescinded. And somehow there is some confusion still, maybe in the ordinances. Would that be a true statement? That notwithstanding, you proceed in good faith and I think it's the right thing to approve. It's a minor, it's a minor addition and it's really not detrimental to the master plan or anything. It's not a large project. So I'd make a, make a motion to approve the project.
Ms. Burnout? Yes. Mr. Agbento?
Yes, for all the reasons that was heard and consistency is, the great consistency is, I appreciate the good faith that you guys have taken to support the pause, the money, the time, the energy. And to be in front of us today, I say yes.
Mr. Wade?
I vote yes. Sorry for the confusion and the heartache that you had to go through, very, very, just for the roof. It's such a great project, enjoy it. Welcome to Bradley Beach.
Mr. Pisa?
I vote yes. I can go with my, my always sentiments. Very sorry for whatever, whatever additional cost we must have incurred. It's really not worth it.
Mr. Patel?
I vote yes. Well, with sentiments from the board, driving by the house, it appears that they're already siding the roofing and moving the house. Thinking they're improving the neighborhood and the town. Welcome to Bradley.
Mr. Ray?
I vote yes, for all the reasons given.
And Chairwoman?
I vote yes, because they, I vote yes because I think it's a good project, but also because of trying to correct problems from our construction department. Yes and no, so I do vote yes and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Next case, Alice Connolly, block eighteen, lot six, five oh nine Newark Avenue.
I need the first three photos.
All right, guys?
Yep.
Alice Connolly, any questions?
Well, this is CD twenty-one slash fifteen, both parents is for a second story addition over an existing front porch on Alice Connolly, block eighteen, lot six, five oh nine Newark Avenue. The applicant seeking both parents' approval for the post-construction of a second story addition over an existing front porch.
Another question.
So you are Alice Connolly?
I am indeed.
Welcome.
My name is Tom.
Okay, Tom.
I'm Mr. Mitchell.
So why don't we swear all of you, when you each raise your right hand and roll with your spell, use your vacuuming. You swear a firm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and got the best of the times, proceed.
All right, we are Tom and Alice Connolly, property owners at five oh nine Newark Avenue, block eighteen, lot six, a twenty-five foot by ninety foot lot. We married in July two thousand and eight and bought the house here in September of two thousand and two. So we have been enjoying nineteen years of each other. We are blessed with five children and nine grandchildren, all who have had so much fun visiting us. Some of them have slept on crib mattresses on either side of our bed. But they have grown and now Tom has developed Parkinson's disease disability, so we cannot safely sit low up things on either side of our bed as they are tripping hazard to Tom. One manifestation of Parkinson's is difficulty with balance, so he needs room to maneuver around the bed and our room. Since we have run out of floor space, we are asking for approval to build a new ten by eighteen foot room above the existing front porch to our home. That will become our new master bedroom. It would be the same size as our present bedroom and would give time sufficiently to maneuver.
What is the message?
Ten by eighteen. Our property has several existing non-informities related to the size of the lot. With the addition, the side yard setbacks remain the same, but each side would require a variance. It was on the year ago, though, but they're two point three one. We request a variance for front yard setback to the second story addition. Presently, it's at eight point eighty-one feet and we ask that it goes six point eighty-one feet, a two foot break. We request a variance for building coverage of a one point six percent increase from fifty-two point twelve to fifty-three point seventy-two percent. We request a variance for imperious coverage, a point ninety-three percent increase from seven point eighty-eight percent to seventy point eighty-one percent. Those are all the figures. And in closing, I ask that you grant us approval so that the next two generations can enjoy Bradley Beach as much as we have and we can keep my husband safe in our home. Thank you.
Do you have a streetscape of the first and second floors of the house in front of you? The setbacks on the second floor?
Of our house?
Your house, the house to the right, house to the left.
The house to the left is the same.
Now?
Size of our.
Now? And when you come out the front, you're going to be blocking them.
The, the second floor.
You'll be blocking them.
Yes. And this house to the right is setback farther on.
You're in the same situation. Do you have room in the back to do this or?
No. I examined that possibility, but it would mean, we'd have to, one of the architects, one of, John, John Mabot suggested putting a third floor on the house. And it seemed kind of, we'd lose a bedroom on the second floor and an extra five stairs. I'm not getting any younger, I did not want to have another five stairs to run up and down. So it wouldn't work out.
What's over the sunroom?
The sunroom, that's, that would be the problem because the hallway stops at the bathroom and the bedroom. And in order to go back over to the sunroom, which is not strong enough, it disappeared another, at least back bedroom and back to the bathroom. It just seems to me, my, my thinking was, was more logical just to go right out over the.
Yeah, but it would change the streetscape of the street. And that's another.
I have enclosed in your brochure photos of several houses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, in the neighborhood, but on your direct line.
The corner of Fletcher and Lor has several houses that have rooms over the porch. Several on Park Place, they also have rooms over the front porch.
I'd be honest, this is the line, this really is, and I don't like, these applications, it's stretching, if you stretch these houses that, I know they're older homes and the lots are constrained to what you can do. This, like the question about you have a streetscape, photos or anything showing east and west of the homes, how they stand, there is, there is, there is a question of, as this projects out, your neighbors are going to have to walk and now accept the precedent in a sense. Not, a, each application stands on its own, let's give, but once that starts, we take these houses and we just incrementally load up, load up the streetscape and change it. The question about going to the back is a valid question because the roof. The relief could be done there. I know it's not what it will be for.
So the, the back of the house has a, a sunroom, which is, which is not.
I understand.
It's a bit totally dismantling.
I understand. No, I, I, I understand, it's just, I, I don't know for the rest of the board, but.
I have to agree with that.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, I'm really not comfortable with bumping this out. These homes just, they come to a point, this, this home's probably close to eighty years old, ninety years old. Hundred years old. And we get to a point where how many, how many times we stretch them, twist them, tweak them to meet modern needs?
I don't know, I have other pictures of Newark Avenue.
See, I don't know when those are done. See, that's, that's not even really applicable to this application because we don't know when they were done and what rules they were done, what the applications were, how many years ago, prior to zoning, after zoning. what the applications were, how many years ago, prior to zoning, after zoning, law questions. Those are independent applications. Like I say, each one stands on its own. Trust me, I
It's, I do hear what you are saying. I'm just thinking that there was, I had seen so many houses in town with a blown off the front porch that it seemed the most logical approach to solving our problem.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Why is it a cantilevered out further than the porch underneath?
Because the porch is eight feet and we're requesting a bedroom that would be 10 feet so that Tom has room to get around the bed.
So remind me again, how big is this addition?
It's 18 feet long and 10 feet deep.
So this part is 18 feet right here? Does it have to go out 18 feet?
No, the width of the house.
Oh, the width of the house is 18 feet, okay. I mean, I, I was uncomfortable with the cantilevering. It just seems like you're extending it even further than it should be.
We have testimony from the architect or builder regarding the structure.
We gotta go, we gotta go to the procedure. Anybody else, Ms. Connolly from the board? Anybody from the general public, Ms. Connolly? Now you can bring your argument.
Did somebody say yes? Do you have a question for Ms. Connolly?
No.
No.
The 10-foot addition, when it basically comes out
Valano, if you could just give your credentials.
Good morning. I was here last month.
Give me your name and stuff and I'll say yes or no.
Give a little 30 second.
Not a problem. Richard Valano, 2006 Highway 71 in Spring Lake Heights. I've been an architect since 1983. I've been before many boards, before Miles and Ocean Counties, doing residential work in
Have you tested Bradley Beach before in front of this board?
Last month.
Thank you. We need something on record.
Not a problem, not a problem. All right, so the addition comes out 10 feet and a cantilever is two feet further than the existing porch. In order to get a decent sized bedroom upstairs, that would make that bedroom nine and a half feet if we came out 10 feet to the outside edge. If we lined it up with the porch, the bedroom's only seven and a half feet. So I, I think we weren't gonna ask that much by coming out another two feet past the front of the house. In order to put the addition on the back, that sunroom has to be dismantled. We need to put in foundations, do everything, and then lose a bedroom upstairs to get to the new bedroom. So it's, it's not, they're not adding anything, they're just trading off. Because they have to go through one of those bedrooms in the back to get to the addition in the back. So it's not really helping them, it's not giving them that extra bedroom. So the best way to
Four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms, there's three existing and then this would have been the fourth. There's a toilet, bathroom in the back there. There's an existing plan and a proposed plan you could look at, yes?
So if you built this structure on the front, you can't lever it all. You're telling me that 100, we have on the record that has 100 years old. 100-year-old porch is gonna carry the weight of what, it's not gonna carry it. Okay, so you're gonna have to redo the bottom of that too?
Probably.
So doing, so now we're talking about, it's not a question about doing new foundations. It's a question of access, right? Because if you're doing a new foundation in front or you're doing a new foundation in the back, what difference does it make?
Well, if it stays the way it is now and we put the addition on the back, I don't have to do anything to the front porch. It's not taking any more lengths than what it is now.
I, I understand that, but the first issue you raised was in the back. If we asked you to put it in the back, you would have to demolish the sunroom, build a new foundation, and the whole shebang would have to be done there.
And still have three bedrooms.
Yes, but wait a second. What you also just said, that the front porch is not gonna be able to, if we allow you to do what you're gonna do, you're gonna have to demolish the front porch and do a whole new reset on the front. So the issue at hand is not really the issue of the foundation because whether it was in the front or in the back, you would still be doing demolition plus foundation. The real issue is this issue of access and the house is what it is.
The front porch would not get enlarged, it would be the same size as it is now, just with better supports.
I, I understand that, but the question before was, you can't put it in the back because you would have to demolish the back sunroom, build a new foundation and do that. The question I ask you is, are you doing a new foundation in the front to carry the load that would be above? And you said yes. So we're doing a foundation in the front or you're doing a foundation in the back? Doesn't really matter, it's the foundation, right? So your real issue is the issue of the access, right?
Of the access?
Yes. Losing the third bedroom.
So whether we build something on the back and have access to it only gives me a three-bedroom house.
If we put it on, the idea was
I understand what the idea is.
We walk the stairs and continue all the way along and then the room goes
I, I understand, but unfortunately your house is a discreet house, like you've really got very little room to move. And, and you know, I concur with my colleagues, I mean, this is, to put this thing on the front is a hell of a situation. And I get why it's can't deliver that because it doesn't make sense to build a tiny bedroom in the front. I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying, but you have to understand the positions, at least of me and what I, I believe my colleagues must be saying, seem to be saying, that, you know, we just, we struggle.
If we did not put the cantilever on and we followed the same shape as the ground floor, would I still need to be here? Or would I get zoning approval and no problems? I'd still be here.
Still be here because probably of the coverage.
It would be all existing.
It's not meeting the setback requirement, so you're making
What is the coverage in the house? Where is that?
That's what we're gonna try, you know, open up the front yard setback question.
You would still need a front yard setback, you would still need the side yard setback. I don't know what the coverage would be, but you may still need coverage variances. Your, I believe your existing coverage is over, so even if you weren't adding to the coverage, it would still be, you know, a variance, yeah.
This is the conundrum we have, but basically it's these small lots and trying to bring them to modern standards, or at least for modern living. And everybody has changed, the circumstances have changed. And while you made use of bedroom, I don't know if there's some, you're the architect. Some creative reconfiguring of that second floor to get you a hallway for a back bedroom, I don't know. We're not gonna decide that, too. The real issue is pumping that out in the front like that, that just becomes a very
It's a dynamic.
It changes, it changes the dynamic of things.
But there are so many other
I under, trust me, I, I, I've looked at it for 30 years. I look, I walk by around too, I say, what? You know, but you're right, it's, what was then is not what's before us now. So we have to deal with it.
I mean, you do have, you do possibly have a cure, but you know.
But it will not give me
I don't know, we don't know, we're not, we can't design that.
We can't design it.
It's up to you and your professionals to hire to come up with a solution. And I think if you hear us, we're kind of
Can I ask you a question just about, you know, we listened to an application last month, if I'm not mistaken, that had an addition to the back of the house, it's all about sacrifices, right? Respect the fact that we have a sunroom here, but what I recall from that previous application was, there was an additional room on the ground floor that supported, you know, everything around mobility, in our older age, to also access kind of inside and out, I remember they had two dogs, I recall. But, long story short, sunroom, sacrifice, using that as a space to potentially build this additional room?
Can't, we can't go with the
No, I'm just curious about like what, what the thinking was to not do that, yeah, I'm just curious about that.
We were just trying to save some money by just going up on the second floor. The foundation work is minimal because it's only here, so it wasn't like building a basement or a crawl space or something like that. But if we do go out the back, we're still over coverage.
Actually, probably got a better odds.
But I have the chance.
Nobody's saying yes or no.
Just asking the question, please understand.
Just looking at the plans.
We're gonna look at the plans.
No direction.
We could, we could ask you, would you like to make a motion to continue it? Ask him back next month with other plans, I mean, you have to ask. This is giving you some, floating some things out.
All right, I spoke with my client, I think we're gonna ask for a continuance and come back in
You have to be continued, it's because this board ends December 31st. You have to be ready for the next meeting with the plans in at the time you do.
So Mr. Valano, let me just, this is kind of, just letting you know what the reality is and whether So if you, our next meeting is December
16?
Summer 16th. So you would need to be in a position if you want this board to make a retrumination at the other date. If you're gonna revise your plans, you'd have to have everything ready within 10 days.
10 days, you have to be in my possession 10 days prior
Prior to December 16th. We go to this board, if you didn't, weren't able to make that kind of a combination, you may be in a position, you'd have to re-follow your application. That would be likely.
And the pros and cons of that, and then just a difference in other applications?
It's the face of the beginning, I just know.
Yeah, I can't get into what the fee is, that's not my value, but I'm just saying that you would be essentially, if you weren't able to make that deadline and you wanted to present an application, you'd be presenting it before, would it be a new application before a new board?
And could these bring the four cases ahead of us tonight, Tom? Or am I not even gonna get heard?
We're gonna try and hear everything.
We would make every effort.
We're gonna try and make, try and hear everything to close out the year.
We have four applications here tonight, we're gonna try to hear everyone. I can tell you that this board and the professionals are committed to seeing this through, the applications again, many before the board for a determination as we can.
All right, we will discuss this amongst ourselves and see if we can make the deadline.
Do you want us to continue?
Yes.
She has, Ms. Connolly has asked.
Can we do a continuance till next month?
Yes, I'll make a motion, make a motion that we continue till next month without notice.
It would be December 16th.
December 16th.
So if anybody's here on this application, there won't be any further notice as it stands now. This matter will be listed on the December 16th meeting. For that, we'll notice as the chairman.
If not, if this group withdraws, that's it.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No conflict?
No conflict.
You ready? This is 500 Stanley Avenue, zoning board 2113, Christina Anderson, proposing to demolish the existing performing accessory garage, constructor resident, additionally pulling a new garage, covered for barrier with that in existing residence.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg, Jeffrey Deacon on behalf of the applicant, Kristi Andreessen, next to me. We also have our architect Carolyn Young, and I'm from the Deacon Law Firm, Ocean Grove, New York.
Who do you got?
I've got Kristi Andreessen and Carolyn Young.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Our professionals here, if you should, if you're trying to tell the truth, it's nothing that's true to me.
So I just, I just wanted to point out to the board members, we've got Mr. the evaki review letter and the applicant has made some modifications to the plans. The latest date of the plans, which all of these have been submitted and I hope the board members have it, it is 11/10/2021, should be the latest architectural plans by Carolyn Young. That, we submitted that, it was submitted the end of last week, I guess. I just wanna make sure, that's the plans we're gonna be going off, and obviously we'll address the review letter. Everyone have the right plan?
I had left them on the day as, but forget it.
Looking for the right, the right plan.
One step behind.
We have to move it quickly tonight, so you should be much better.
We are trying to get.
Yes. Kristi, you're the, you're the owner of 500 Brinley Avenue, from the drive-in gate?
I am.
And that's designated Block 43, Lot 15.
Yep.
And that lot is a 75 by 75 foot lot, so it's a, it's an undersized lot from the same point. It doesn't meet the rear depth along Fletcher Lake Avenue, is that correct?
Correct.
It's also a corner lot?
Yep.
And can you explain to the board why you're proposing, what you're proposing this evening?
Sure. Um, so, as Mr. Beaton mentioned, it's a, it's a corner lot that we're on where the front of the house, the address is Brinley Avenue. The Fletcher Lakeside though is where our driveway is, and that's where we enter the house. So, for the 17 years that I've lived there and own the home, that's what we consider the main entrance to our house. Where you walk into the home, you come into a tiny cramped landing that goes immediately down a stairway that doesn't have a door on it, is not a code. And we think, and we've actually had people say to us that it's, it's actually unsafe, we have elderly parents, my partner, who's here, I have elder, when I say we have elderly parents, we have small misses and nephews, and we are wanting to build a proper entrance that we don't have to worry about people coming in and out of. The main entrance to our home on Brinley Avenue is also not really a proper entrance. It opens into our living room, and we don't have any really coat closets or, or storage space in, in that area to, to put things in when you come into the home. That brings me to the, the topic of storage, which it's a 100-year-old craftsman with really no storage space. We have a basement that is out of the stride. We don't have really many closets in the house, we actually have a half bath that we use as a closet. So, we, we, it's not really that, that ideal situation. And we also have a garage, which I have a series of photos in front of you, where you can see the two cars parked in the driveway, that garage is crumbling and falling down, and really needs to be replaced. In addition to that, it is not attached, yeah. We can't get our cars in the garage. So, it's not really, you know, it, it'd be gold garage, but, but we can't really use it for that purpose.
And that garage that's just over a foot, or just like, you know, the two feet from the side property line, or?
Correct.
The north property line in the car?
Yeah, it could be, it is a good corner lot, but yeah, the north property line, which is actually the, the rear yard, it's a foot and a half, currently a foot and a half from the property line. So, we're talking about knocking it down, rebuilding it further from the property line. So, we wanna take it from a foot and a half to five feet from the property line. And between the garage and the house, build a proper entryway, so that we're now making it an attached garage.
And then a bit mudroom area, not, not an overly sized area?
No, it's, it's, it, um, I think it works out to be about, um, because it's.
Apparently, it's okay.
Yeah, that's all.
And you're also proposing a porch along Fletcher Avenue side as well, right?
Right, so, um, we, we currently have another view, another view of the home that has a nice little bench out from up where we sit outside. And we would like to build a covered porch on that, that small covered porch that is essentially in line with a lot of properties on that street. So, we have a place to sit outside, so we must just have a bench in the middle of our yard.
And because you only have that 75-foot depth along Fletcher Avenue, is there any property from your neighbor to the north that you could purchase to make that more conforming or conforming?
No, no, there's a neighbor right next door that's been in that home for a while, and yeah.
And, and that house is, that, that house, actually, if you, if you look at this picture right here, this one here, um, the neighbor's house is pretty close to the line as well, is that accurate to say?
It is, it's a little further than, than our garages, but it's, it's pretty close, yeah.
And there's no property that you could buy along Brinley Avenue for the same reasons, is that accurate? And that, and the same thing, that, that dwelling, whatever dwelling is.
Apartment building, yeah.
Apartment building is pretty close to the line as well.
It is, yeah.
There's others with the fence, correct? That's pretty close to the line.
It is.
So, I don't have any other questions for Kristi, at this time, most of our questions will be with the architect. Do you have any questions?
It's definitely a one-car garage, so you're actually going from your old quote, two-car, to a one-car. So, I think it's still technically a two-car garage as far as the width, but we probably would only be putting one car in it.
Can I hold the architect's testify about what's being proposed, compared, existing versus proposed? Oh, you know, I should ask you one question. In, in the Evakian Review Letter, the general comments?
Oh, yeah.
The very last section, you don't have any issues with any of those things, if you're, if you're approved, is that correct?
Michael?
Sure, Mr. Beaton, this is actually a question for you. You noted that, that there's changes to the architecture, are there, are those changes manifested in the Evakian letter?
What do you mean, the arch, change to the architecture?
There's this updated, the updated architectural drawing.
Or? These are not, but we will compare what's in the letter to, to explain to the board what the difference is. There's nothing that expanded the issues, we've actually reduced the issues.
Our letter is dated November 5th, and the plans are dated November 10th. I remember our new plans run very quickly.
Maybe before we go further, what are the differences that we know we're going on?
Well, I'll have Ms. Young testify as to what those are, so we'll go through the letter.
Anybody from the board, and anybody from the public? Okay, now I put the arch, your architect, I want to give us a 30 seconds of who you are.
I can actually just stand.
Carolyn, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And how long have you been licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Since 1981.
And have you testified before boards such as, uh, boards of adjustments or planning boards in the past?
Yes.
And have you testified before this board ever?
I have not.
Have you been certified as an expert in the field of architecture?
Yes.
I would offer her as an expert.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Ms. Young, you are the architect of record and prepared the plans for the application, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we start with your site plan area and explain what's being proposed, starting at the Brinley Avenue side, and working our way around, and then we'll talk about the differences in the plans from what was originally submitted.
So, on the bottom right of your drawing is the original site plan, survey of existing conditions. The front, the technically front yard of the house is on Brinley, where there is a front door, and Fletcher Lake Ave is the side, however, it's a corner lot, so it's considered a front as well. As Kristi already said, there is a detached garage on the property, which is 1.1, I think it's 1.6 feet from the property line. The garage is about 18 feet wide, and there is a space between the garage and the house that currently exists. The property, the lot is non-conforming because it's a corner lot where Brinley is the front, so the northern property line is the rear. The requirement for your prop, for your lot depth is 100 feet, and this exists at 75 feet. So, it's an existing non-conforming condition. It's already been discussed that the driveway comes in off of Fletcher, and we are proposing to keep the driveway in its current state, and we'll go through that.
What's being proposed on the Brinley, Brinley Avenue side, because that's the least impactful here?
On Brinley Avenue side, we are proposing nothing. We are only proposing to remove some impervious coverage. Perhaps I should just update on our.
Well, there is some crosshatching on the Brinley Avenue side at the entrance way. Just so the board understands what's being proposed there, because that's new, correct?
No.
Oh, that's not?
No, that's enclosed, existing.
Oh, okay, I thought that was your proposed crosshatching.
I'm, I'm sorry, no, no, it's not, that's just there.
Okay.
Um, but nothing's being proposed on Brinley Avenue, all of the work is being done on the Fletcher side. If we come up to our proposed site plan, which is the upper site plan drawing, you can see there, at the north side of the property, we're proposing a new garage, creating a mudroom entrance, which Kristi has referenced, and we are proposing a porch on that side of the property as well. Out, an outside porch.
Now, with the garage, the existing garage is how large, do you recall?
It's about 18 by, oops. 18 by 18, which someone has asked, said that this is two-car garage. I really wouldn't consider it a two-car garage would exist. It's barely deep enough for one car, it's like one and a half car garage, as it exists.
And what, what's being proposed with respect to the garage?
What's being proposed is a 16-foot, three-inch garage by 26-foot depth. The depth of the garage will make it much better for storage, recycling garbage cans, all that kind of stuff, and to be able to accommodate a sizable car, not just a, a mini car. So, that's the new garage.
And the proposed garage is, is smaller than the existing, correct?
It is a bit narrower, but it is longer.
And you're proposing to take it off of the property line from where the existing garage is?
Okay, so, the drawings that you previously received, that the report was based upon, we had, we had proposed a 3.5-foot setback from the north property line. The drawings that you're looking at tonight, which I have here on my board, we have modified that to be a five-foot, 5.1-foot setback. Trying to improve it in the interest of, of approvals.
And at the same time, you also made some modifications to, to the size of the, or the width of the garage as well, when you made this change, correct?
Yeah, the, the drawing that you previously looked at, I think the garage was 18 feet, 18 and a half or something. So, we've reduced the width of the garage, and we've reduced the width of the mudroom from the previous drawings, all in the interest of expanding that rear yard to the five-foot dimension, rather than the 3.6 that was previously reviewed.
And because you're proposing the mudroom, that results in the request for the rear yard setback, is that correct?
Proposing the mudroom does, does two things, it, it, it makes this an attached garage. It's no longer a detached accessory structure. And it's, it's also, it's also relative to the rear yard.
And you could potentially, I guess, not have the mudroom, but as an architect, what's your thought about that?
Well, um, this house is really a very beautiful, classic bungalow-style house, very low slum roof, as you all have the pictures in front of you. It's really a beautiful, a beautiful piece of architecture, and there are fewer and fewer of those left. Probably the only thing that's, uh, is an original to the front of this is this front vestibule that I suspect was added at some point. But, you know, as any classic, classic old architecture from the 20s, and, you know, now I have to, have to clarify that that's 1920s, not 2020s. But any architecture of that era is lacking in, you know, basic things today. It didn't originally have a garage, I'm sure, that looks like it's from the 60s. There's no coat closet anywhere. Kristi was trying to explain the condition of walking in, essentially what's a side door of the house, which was just the access to the basement stair. And that's how they're coming into the house all the time, since that's where they park their cars. So, it's classic, beautiful bungalow architecture, which I will get into, one of our goals is to try to maintain that and enhance it. But the mudroom is trying to give us space, where we can have a coat closet, where we can have a bench, where you can put your shoes on, take your shoes off, you know, leave your, leave your wet coat and umbrella, and, and then change the staircase, so that's not how you enter the house, the tight little stair that's been referenced, but to, to come into the house directly into the kitchen, and to isolate that awkward staircase, so it's just a stair to the basement.
And so, when we're talking about the setback, you're making it more conforming than what's, what's existing?
We are making it more conforming than what's existing, what's, what exists is a detached garage. So, it, it's referenced in our chart down below as an accessory structure, that's where you see its existing, you know, conditions of the 1.6 feet, et cetera, that we've already been talking about. But when we make it an attached garage, we are still non-conforming because it's a five-foot setback that we're proposing. We've already mentioned that we're a non-conforming lot depth of 75 feet instead of 100 feet. You know, just to point out, the existing hardship here is, one existing hardship is that if we had that additional 25 feet, we would be proposing a 30-foot setback, and we would be conforming to the minimum of 25 feet. So, you know, it, it, it's a property, we're trying to do the best we can, we have an existing hardship with that setback.
And what you're proposing from an architectural aesthetic standpoint, how does that compare the garage and the roof line of the garage, how does that compare with the craftsman style of the home?
You have a, you have two side views of photographs in your package. One that shows the side view of the home. My camera couldn't take the whole thing, it wasn't lighting the lens. And sort of directly adjacent to that, you see the existing garage. So, um, so we've tried to take the side, side of the house, which is appealing, but doesn't have as much character as the Brinley facade of the house. And we've tried to incorporate a porch, an outside porch, with roof lines that are consistent with the home, with columns and materials that are consistent with the home, and they carry on the, the classic bungalow style of the house. We've created the mudroom connection with this one-story low roof, with a door that just tucks in and enters. And then we've created the garage, which is a garage with some storage space above it. And again, we've really worked to implement architecture that's gonna be in keeping respectful of the original house. that's going to be in keeping respectful of the original house. Materials will match. Rackets, gables, overhangs will all be in keeping with the house.
And what's the height of the proposed garage?
It's 18 and 1/2 feet. We have garage, and we do have an interior stair. It will take us up to some storage space above.
And that was also changed since the avakin review letter?
Yes. I believe the previous drawings, we were at 20 feet high or 21. And we have reduced the height of this, again, in the interest of trying to make it as minimal as possible, given our setback conditions.
And from the perspective of the building coverage?
So, the building coverage, your zone is for 35%. And the house, as it currently exists, is already an existing non-conforming. It's at 41%. It is over. It's over your existing coverage as it exists. We are proposing an increase in building coverage that'll bring us to 44.3%. That is... That is a net increase of 259 square feet. We're taking away the existing garage, which is about four... We're taking away a total of about 400 square feet, 408. And then, we are adding back the porch, which is, although it's an outside space, it is counted as building coverage. And we're adding the mudroom and the new garage.
And that's counting as building coverage of the porch because it has the roof, correct?
Because it has a roof on it, correct? Which, you know, as Christie said, they sit on this side. But I also think that architecturally, this is, you know, in keeping with the bungalow style of the house and is complementing it.
And if you just put a porch on there, from an architectural opinion?
I think it would be a... You know, it would not be adding character to the side view of the house that the roof is adding as a building coverage.
And let's talk about the impervious coverage and the changes that are being proposed there.
So, the drawings in the previous package, the impervious coverage was being increased. Currently, it's at 63%. The existing impervious coverage, 60 is what's allowable, but 63 is existing. And in the previous drawing, we were increasing that. But the drawing you're looking at here, which is the submittal date of 11/10, we went back and took away areas of existing impervious coverage that were wrapping around the west side of the house and some areas of impervious coverage coming around the corner of the house. So, by taking those away with the proposed addition, also with the reduction in the square footage by pulling the side in, all of that totaled up together, the proposed impervious coverage is now 58.6%. So, we have eliminated that variance.
And that's also eliminating an existing non-conforming condition as well, correct?
It is eliminating an existing non-conforming condition, yes.
And is there any proposal to make any changes to the existing driveway?
No. The engineer report does talk about existing non-conforming conditions of the driveway. The driveway is currently, whatever. I don't know exactly what it is. A foot off the property line or so. When you have a zoning ordinance has a setback from the property line, we're not proposing to change what exists. There were some other existing things about the curb cut being larger and wider than what your ordinance requires, and we're not proposing to change what exists.
Do you know, or are you able to scale, what is the distance from the garage to that front property line on Fletcher?
It was referenced as 22.75 feet in the engineer report.
So, it's not like you could stack cars along there anyway, correct?
No.
So, having, keeping the width of the driveway will allow you to park more cars off-street?
So, yeah. The width of the driveway will allow for a car to tuck over here to the side and still allow another car to be able to get in and out, which would be a nice improvement, you know, for the sake of the streetscape and the property.
And with respect to the general comments, I asked Christie the same question, but are there any issues with those general comments in the review letter?
No, not at all.
And no problem putting them on the plans as well, correct?
Correct.
I think that went through the changes. So, if you can just verify, right now, we are not proposing an impervious coverage variance, correct?
Correct. No impervious coverage variance is required.
We are proposing a building coverage variance?
Yes.
And what is that?
We are proposing an increase to 44.3% when previously was 41. So, it's an increase of 3.3%.
And what was the total square footage of that increase?
It's an increase of 250 square feet.
But that also is a reduction from the initial avakin review letters, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And the rear yard setback to the garage, to the attached garage, that is what now?
5 feet, 5.1 feet, when we had 3.5.
And a detached garage, that actually would be conforming as far as the setback, correct?
Yes, yes.
I think that's the overview of the application.
Christine?
How many cars are going to be on-site?
How many cars can park on-site with the garage and the driveway?
You could have two. One in the garage and one outside.
You know...
Two outside. Well, you could have two. That's true. You could have two.
So, it could be a total of three?
It could be a total of three, yes.
Christine, do we still need a variance in number four?
They still need the rear yard setback.
At 5.1.
Yes, which, as the architect testified too, that one, it goes from being the accessory structure setback to being part of the principal structure. But they are... They have moved the building that was near that property back.
And the coverage went from 44.3...
Right.
In number five. Number six now is out.
Correct. So, there are still quite a number of existing non-conformities associated with the site. But the only two variances there seeking today are the rear yard setback and the existing building coverage, correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions in the board?
What's the square footage of the side porch?
The porch?
Yeah.
I need to do that calculation for us. The side porch is 144 square feet.
So, that's essentially, that's the majority of this 200 square feet of...
Yeah, I mean, the 200... That's the increase because we're taking away. So, I get to swap, but yes.
Just clarification. You said this was your full-time residence, and you've been here for...
17 years this month, actually.
Congratulations.
Anybody else in the board?
And I assume that you're planning on staying in Bradley Beach.
I have no plans to go anywhere else. Respect me.
Anybody else in the board?
I just have one question. I think how much the peak that appears to be on the garage seems to be higher than the peak on the house?
I think it is slightly. It's slightly higher.
Is there a reason? I'm just thinking, if everything seems to be, you know, trying to stay in line, I wonder why that was higher?
Well, we're trying to be complimentary of everything. I'm not trying to use this ridge as a maximum. Because we have a mudroom here, which has, you can see the roof on that as though you were looking at it through the garage. And what I don't want to have happen is I don't want this roof to slam into that roof. Like, if I pull this down lower, I end up with these roofs hitting each other.
So, that one's higher because of the mudroom?
Right.
Not because of the fact that you're trying to make more storage in the garage?
No. Yeah, it's driven by wanting to have clean architecture, which I think the bungalow would have done.
Anybody else? Anybody from the board? Anybody from the audience? Want to ask the architect any questions? Any general questions, comments in the board? Any comments or general questions from the audience? Christine, it's back to you.
Thank you. I would just offer the application as amended to be approved this evening. As you can see, I think it's a de minimis application as far as the variances that are proposed. We're also mitigating some of the existing conditions when it comes to setbacks, when it comes to the impervious coverage and other things. And it also complements the existing craftsman style of the home with a lot that's unfortunately undersized when it comes to that lot depth on Fletcher. So, I'd ask the board to approve it.
Any comments? I make a motion to approve this as adjusted per testimony. And I think to go ahead with this as an improved property, cleans up some situations, helps with the coverage.
One second.
Ms. Barnes?
Well, I would guess, perhaps it's lovely to start it. I'm well-casting all the time. I'm sure you have my wife Del ponte. And I think this is just on making it more lovely. Thank you for keeping it.
Mr. Ivento?
I think for all the reasons that we've described, the architectural clean lines, really appreciate that as well as... When we think about this work, it's being averly. And I so appreciate the averly motion in the minimis kind of approach, as well as trying to find some of those features to live with storage and all of the rest. So, with that said, I so appreciate that. This is an improvement to Bradley Avenue and to... I say yes.
Mr. Wade?
I also vote yes. It's a nice-looking corner. It's going to get nicer looking. Including property on the corner. Good overall.
Mr. Afusso?
I believe yes. You're removing some non-conformities, certainly improving the look of the garage. So, bringing that more contemporaneous to the property side, I would say.
Mr. Fratelli?
I vote yes as well. Following up with the comments that were made by the board. And hope your family enjoy Bradley Beach for a long time to come.
Mr. Mayor?
Vote yes also, for all reasons stated.
And Jay Rosenbauer?
I made my comments.
Thank you.
You don't go home.
I know, I know.
I make the motion. Great, second. Will you favor?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And Wade, also.
So exciting.
I'll sell it after I've done this. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I love the ocean, but I love lakes, too. I love having a home. I realize I've lived 16 years in a city now. So, you don't think that's... I was saying, I love the city. I love the red building. But I did that much of it, so, right? But I know. Yeah, what I want to do, like, this is definitely a city. It's a... Absolutely, yeah.
We had taken the wash for the second procedure.
Fish, escuderies. Fish, turkey.
It's okay. I never got anything. I have gin spattered, I make the turd. I do one of these things at the day, right? A minute. Off-occasion is shrimp. Somebody said to me the other day, they said, "Don't go vamp the butt." Yeah. I said, "All right, I think that is a lot." And the sewer's a red. It's a red so much. The sewer's can't shut. How is the sewer's going to handle this? It's like what I enjoyed today.
That's it. It's done. It's it. Next week, it might be fixed again.
You should see Jim Hardy. Think your Hardy's there. He's got no one.
See how I'm like, I'm afraid of golf, not that I can't, with building up strength. The promise, I'm losing my fingers to golf.
He went west, James, and he took him on where Ashley's.
I'm thinking of my great grandsons. And I've got mine. I got four, two grandparents. What do you? I think you're going to have a great grandson. You ready, girl?
That's what's the object. We've got cases.
You gotta make sure. Otherwise I guess everything's. You go first. We gotta go in the right order. I make a motion. We open, we open the meeting? Will you favor? Meeting is now open. Everybody press. We have ten attendants.
I should probably take the role. Mr. Adenko?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. Fuso?
Here.
Mr. Fratelli?
Here.
Ms. Bernau?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
And Jay Rosenberg?
Yes.
And our professionals.
Everybody came back. That's a good start.
Okay, so our next application under consideration is ZB71/11, used in both branches for misstructure. James and Dorothy Frederick, Walk Jiffy, Park Ball, 704 Fourth Avenue. The applicant seeking use in both branches to propose construction of a new two and a half story dwelling and detached garage with apartment. The actions represent our objective statement as fire.
Evening again. Jeffrey Deeman speaking in law firm Ocean Grove, New Jersey. I represent James and Dorothy Frederick. They are the owners of the property and the applicant for the application this evening. Also with us this evening is our architect David Feldman and our engineer and planner Joe Kishuba.
Mr. Stevens, could just Kishuba and Mr. Feldman just come up? They are professionals. If you'd raise your hand, Mr. Justford. You swear in front and tell the truth. I hope you're not going to tell the truth tonight to see me.
I do.
Thank you very much. And for the record, just state your name.
James Creder.
You are the applicant and the owner of the property?
Yes, with my watch.
And Dorothy's sitting right behind me, although I think Jim's going to be the one to testify this evening. We also pre-marked A1. We have a commercial development exhibit. And we have A2, which is down here. This is a aerial of the area. Thank you. And I will pass two of these around for the board members to share. We'll talk about that from when the engineer testifies. Do we have that? Okay, great. So, Jim, you are the owner of the property. And what is it that you're proposing to do on this property?
We're proposing to put a two and a half story, single-family home with detached garages, with a apartment on the top with detached garage.
And when you were looking at the property and the area, was there a reason why you were proposing a single-family development with a detached garage?
Yes. We did check into putting a commercial building on the property with apartments on top. We didn't feel it fit in the neighborhood. Didn't fit, so that's why we chose the residence by commercial building.
And you're looking to reside at this property?
That's correct. That's correct. As soon as it's built.
And how long have you owned the property?
Approximately three years.
And what is on the property now?
A vacant lot except for a non-conforming, existing non-conforming garage in the back left corner.
And that garage is right on the property line?
Correct.
So you're looking to move the detached garage, you're looking to move it off the property line?
Correct, to support the setbacks standards, yes.
And generally what you're proposing conforms to the standards of a residential district? Is that correct?
Correct.
Is one of the reasons why you were looking to do that on this property because of what's in the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, it fits, as you can see by the things of it.
I actually don't have any other questions of Jim at this time.
The board have any questions?
Sir. So I just want to make sure I look at it the right way. So we are, I'm looking at this garage with what seems like a circular driveway going all the way around it? On other properties?
Yes, on somebody else's property.
So you've owned this for a period of time. What's the, why is there this circular driveway? What's the story?
I couldn't tell you. It was there when I got there. I suppose a previous owner had multiple connecting properties there and used that as a turnaround. I don't know. We don't use it as a turnaround.
Okay. And when you purchased the property, you knew it was a commercial property, obviously?
Yes.
And you knew that you would have to come before this board in order to change and use it?
That's correct.
Any other questions in the board?
I do have one question.
Sir.
When you purchased the property, was this property always a standalone piece as it is?
As I recall, no. It was part of a, three or four properties that were connected, owned by another entity, family member. Not my family member, a family.
So this was attached to a piece of, to a property that buttoned on Main Street? So is this, this was subdivided, this is subdivided property?
I believe so.
I think it might have been the Johnsons, I think.
Correct.
So town, so the town subdivided the property, permitted to subdivide
Correct.
to a non-conforming lot. So it's forty, forty something feet wide.
Forty feet.
Yeah, it's not, it's not even, now, to standard to fifty by one hundred. I don't care what the depth, it's nine fifty feet. The town gave it, go ahead and do that, they thought, break it off and make a, a build a lot.
How long has that lot been, this before you? Want anybody to add?
Do you know what's always attached to it?
I think it might be on the engineering drawings.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand the evolution of this, of this property. It does seem, it does seem odd that you have an undersized property lot that was subdivided by the town.
Yeah. Do you have access to the engineering drawings?
Yeah.
So the shaded property is what we're talking about, the shaded lot?
So there's lot nine, lot eight, lot?
Eleven.
Eleven. Lot ten.
And this driveway encroaches on fourteen and seventh, so you would think that they had something to do with this property.
Yeah, but it must go way back.
I'm just trying to understand the evolution of this property.
Jim, as far as you know, it's its own lot though, on the tax map, right?
That's correct.
This is not part of any of the lot in the tax?
No, no, I'm real. But I just want to try, I'm just trying to help. How I got forty-three to the lot?
You can see this entire block has a lot of unusual.
Oh, understandable, and this, and I'm asking a question, I kind of already know the answer to.
Yeah.
And because this was a lot that was a hell-shaped lot, an unbroken lot, but there's no, nothing. It just, to me, I find odd that we have a lot that's forty-three feet wide that the town says is acceptable. I just, I just, I just find it a little disconcerting. And I'm not saying, it doesn't, just trying to figure out this all.
Sure.
Any questions for the honor from the board, from the public?
Thomas St. Milan, Sixth and Third Avenue. I own the property at Thorold Main Street and a notice within two hundred feet. Mr. Frederick, the lot number is twelve?
Yes.
So it's not twelve point oh one or twelve point oh two indicating that it was subdivided from the mother lot? Is that correct?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay, great. And in your time of ownership, how's the lot been utilized?
Well, when we first bought the lot, it was, we cleaned it up and had old tires and needles in it and all that kind of stuff. But it's been basically a parking lot, impromptu parking.
Parking for who?
I have kids that own an adjoining lot, so they use it. And I have a, they have a renter there that uses it as well.
And is the lot eliminated?
Negative.
Does the lot have gravel or asphalt for the parking area?
Negative, just the asphalt driveway on the way up.
Are the parking spaces delineated?
Negative.
Is the garage utilized at all?
Yes.
What would that be for?
My son works on motorcycles in the garage.
But it's not leased to another entity?
Negative.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Any else have questions in the board? From the public? Steve, continue.
Felton? So David, you were, you're the architect for the project?
We are.
And what's the name of your company?
Feldman and Feldman Architects. We're located in Marl Township, New Jersey. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for close to thirty years. Jim, before this board and numerous other boards throughout the state.
And you were tasked, I'm sorry, I would offer Mr. Feldman as an architect. You were tasked to prepare the plans for this application, correct?
Yes, we were.
And when you prepare plans for an application, do you look at zoning at all?
We do.
And in this situation, you understood that the zoning was a commercial zone, correct?
That is correct.
But you were tasked to do a residential development with a single-family home and detached garage?
That's correct. So what we did was we used the R1 as a guide and a standard to the design of this home, even though it wasn't a GBW zone.
And when you designed that, did you look at the surrounding neighborhood?
We did.
And what is predominantly the surrounding neighborhood?
Mostly residential, so we thought it would be a transition between what's the business zone and residential.
Now, on Fourth Avenue from Memorial to Main Street, are you familiar with what homes are where as you, as you've come from Memorial heading up to Main?
Not really. I believe the planner could testify to that.
Are you familiar with the house to the right?
Slightly, yes.
Is that a residential development?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the house to the left?
Yes.
Is that a residential?
I believe so, I guess.
So if you could just describe what you're proposing here with your plans.
Okay, so what we're proposing is a modest two and a half story home. When I say modest, the first and second floor consists of a square footage of roughly twenty-four hundred and seventy square feet. There's a habitable attic, which meets the criteria of the residential zone as well as the IRC 2018. And we're proposing a basement within this home. The home consists of three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, and an open floor plan on the first floor. So the first floor basically has a front porch, keeping in context with the area, a foyer, some closet space, and then an open living dining concept to one side of the house with some utilities, powder room, laundry area, and some stairs to access the lower level as well as the second floor. And then as you move back, a kitchen area and breakfast with another outdoor covered sitting area. The first floor consists of twelve hundred and sixty-one square feet total area. The second floor, come up a staircase. We have a master bedroom located to the front of the home with a nice secondary porch partially covered. And then to the back, we have two additional bedrooms, a laundry area, a hall bath for the two bedrooms, and then a walk-in closet serving the master. Continue up to the third or second or half-story, rather, we have a habitable attic, which consists of just under four hundred square feet.
I'm sorry, what's the square footage of the second floor?
Just over twelve hundred.
And it's under four hundred square feet for the habitable attic area? And then with respect to the covered porch slash balcony area on the second floor, the covered area, how far set back is that from the front property line?
I don't know from the front property line. It's set back an additional two feet though from the face of the house itself. So the front porch, looking at the engineer's drawings, is, starts at ten feet, which would be the furthest point of the porch. The second floor starts at seventeen point nine eight or just shy of eighteen feet. And this back porch, this covered area would then be closer to twenty feet.
And if you can go on to?
In addition to that, we're proposing a two-car garage with an apartment above. Again, this is designed to meet the criteria of the R1 zone in compliance with the ordinance of Bradley Beach. If we designed this using the GW, GBW zone, the lot covered could be significantly larger as well as the height of the structure. And so because we were proposing residential and keeping it in context with that, we wanted to use the R1 zone instead of the bad line.
And the first floor of the proposed garage is how many square feet?
Eight hundred. It's a footprint of twenty-eight by twenty-five. The second floor is a six hundred square foot footprint with a square footage of six hundred square feet.
And it's only a one-bedroom?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, which again would be consistent with what would be permitted in an R1 zone.
Yes.
Just to clarify, the actual first floor is seven hundred square feet, correct? Twenty-eight by twenty-five? Okay, I just want to make sure. And you're proposing two garage doors?
We are.
Man door?
Correct.
As well as a door, like interior door going up to that second floor garage apartment?
Yes.
If this were developed in a commercial zone, you could have upper-story residential apartments, correct?
That is correct.
And you could have a four-floor, a floor, a four-story building according to the commercial zone, correct? Which means you could have three floors of?
Of residential.
Apartment. Apartments, which could be three apartments or it could be more apartments than that, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And from a parking standpoint, this proposal will meet all of the off-street parking requirements?
It will.
And that means at least two parking spaces for the garage apartment? And that means at least two parking spaces for the residential development?
Yes, and again, you could, you could see the driveway and length, and the engineer could talk about that a little bit.
And you indicated that there are only three bedrooms in the single-family?
In the single-family home, it's a three-bedroom house.
So overall, we're talking about on a forty-three by a hundred and fifty-foot lot, four total bedrooms?
Yes, if you include the apartment.
Whereas if this were a commercial development conforming on the site, you can have substantially more than that?
Yes.
Potentially?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
With lot apartment standards, let me square it for you maybe? Six hundred, this is seven.
No, the garage, the apartment is six hundred, they said, the garage.
The garage itself is seven, but the actual lived quarters is six.
Does that fit's criteria?
The first floor can be no greater than eight hundred square feet? The second floor, the living area, no greater than six hundred square feet, and this complies with that?
What about height? Twenty-five?
It complies with that as well.
Why are we told here?
Because it's in the GBW zone, so it doesn't, doesn't comply with the standards of the GBW zone, but they're analyzing it against the R1 zone standards, since that, I guess, is the residential zone they felt it was most in line with. So perhaps, I would say, when the engineer and planner gives his testimony, we can have him maybe talk about the variances needed for the zone it's in and, you know, what variances would be needed from residential as well?
Talk first.
Yeah.
And we intend to do that, so the board understands what can be built and what's proposed to be built and why the variances are what they are.
Any questions from the board?
So, so, and it may be a front of these, I might be just dead. Lot eleven and thirteen. The testimony was that they're houses, residences. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the zoning on lot eleven and thirteen?
The whole block is the same zone. This entire block shown in the plan is GBW.
So you are asking us to treat one house in the middle of the block like R1?
Just like the other... Well, I will let the engineer slash planner get into that.
Are those our houses in the GW?
Those houses are in the GW zone.
Okay, okay, all right, I'm good.
Just from a legacy standpoint, those houses have been there for a while. And the one, you can take one step further to the west to track, that's a rental property, current multifamily, across the street is multifamily. Predominantly, the street is multifamily, so in a sense, it is a commercial, except, I know some's shaking their head because it wants a commercial business. But there are rentals up and down that street, except for maybe two or three, let me know of.
I'll let the engineer address this question.
I just, I appreciate, it's a very mixed bag, and I don't know, and I don't know what's behind, that's like, what's behind there too, the little Bradley Beach which lives behind Main Street, what is back there? I don't think, well, I guess the testimony is what's there.
Our engineer has analyzed that.
Do you own any of those? Because your son just lives in them?
Yes, son and daughter. Do they own it? Yes.
Do they own any more?
No, just that.
The lot that they own fronts Main Street, correct?
Correct.
Oh, they're on Main Street?
Correct.
That backs up to yours?
Correct.
Next to Rare or Nat Hudson?
Do you have two lots eventually? Make a T or something?
Well, they connect, but it'll make a T. There's other lots there.
Anybody from the public? Questions?
Thomas Coann, Six Fourth Third Avenue. Mr. Felton, he said three bedrooms in the main house. Is there a bedroom in the attic?
No.
So would that be future finish or...
It'll be, it's intended to be finished but not utilized as a bedroom.
Okay, great. And then have this configuration, have you built this configuration Bradley Beach before?
When you say this configuration?
Front house, back house?
We have.
In which block? Six hundred block?
We did one on, was it Franklin?
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 Which block, do you know?
Four hundred, five hundred maybe?
Okay, thank you very much.
William Chef, One Ten Fifth Avenue, Bradley Beach. Am I seeing correctly that the building height is thirty-six feet a quarter inch?
Yes. That's from grade to the ridge of the structure.
Right. We have an ordinance that specifies thirty-five feet.
That's correct. Again, that's in the R1 zone. In the, in the business zone, it's higher than that. And again, we tried to adhere to the R1 the best we were.
The only time it's higher than that is because we're allowing, if you're gonna be doing commercial with residential and you're going four stories. But this is a, you're constantly saying that you're going with the R1 zone, and now you're proposing a thirty-six-foot high building.
Correct, and the planner will testify, there are two basic variances that are required with this design in the R1 zone. One is the height that you pointed out, the other is lot coverage, where thirty-five is percent, thirty-five is allowed, and I believe we're at thirty-five point two five percent for lot coverage.
Why the thirty-six? What's the height in the...
The thirty-six was due, due to the way the staircase is located and how it comes up from the second floor up to the attic, we needed the head height over here. As you could see, it would be, the platform would be somewhere in here, so we needed the head height to clear the...
You could lower the attic by one foot very easy.
Well, we would have to lower the floor, but if the board so chooses us to reduce that height and not grant that variance, you know, we could try to make the accommodations.
Well, just so I'm clear, technically, under the zone, the GWB zone, there is no variance for a height for a principal structure?
That is correct.
Because it's less than forty-eight feet?
That's correct.
What's being proposed is thirty-six feet in order to address what you just indicated, to have the head height to get up to that attic level?
But in his testimony, he's saying the design of the house is an R1, so...
So you can lower your plate heights and make some changes to comply with the R1?
We could, and, and again, I had a conversation with the engineer as to the seasonal water table, and we could probably also just bring the house further into the ground, which would reduce the height of the ridge to accomplish the thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Anybody else? Continue, Ms. Beepman.
Joe, come on up. Joe, you are a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
You also are a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
That's correct.
How long have you been licensed in each of those fields?
Licensed engineer for sixteen years, licensed planner for thirteen or fourteen.
And have you testified before boards for engineering?
Yes.
And have you also testified before boards for planning testimony?
Yes.
And have you actually testified before this board?
I have had the pleasure, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Joe, you've been tasked to...
So Mr. Beepman, just for the record, he's being offered as an expert in the field of engineering and planning.
That's correct, that is correct. And Joe, you've been tasked to provide the site layout of the dwelling?
Correct.
Is that correct? And if you could just describe what's being proposed from the site layout as compared to the existing?
Certainly. So the existing lot, as has been discussed, is a forty-three-foot-wide lot, hundred and fifty feet deep, interior lot, frontage on Fourth Avenue. To discuss the subdivision issue, my office had reviewed tax maps back to nineteen thirty-one that showed this lot existing in this configuration at that point. So I don't know that the town actually created this.
It's just curious.
Yes, certainly. It does currently have a garage structure non-conforming, a principal garage, a garage is not a principal use permitted in the zone, and is also non-conforming in rear setback. The setback is zero. Ten feet's required in the GBW zone, the GBW general business west zone. The history of that existing lot, the garage has existed since about the nineteen thirties for the historic aerials. It says nineteen forty-four on the tax records, but historic aerials show it before that. And previously, up until about the seventies, there was a home next to the garage, generally in this back right corner, very narrow and long. I'm saying a home. It was a structure rather narrow and long. I'm not sure if it was a garage or a home, but there was something there until about the seventies. The surrounding area is commercially zoned between the railroad tracks and Main, from Evergreen north to Park Place. But this particular area is more residential in character. We'll get into that in a moment in the aerials. Actually, I should bring that up now as far as the aerial of the property. Probably best if I show it vertically here. So here's an aerial of the property in question and the surrounding areas, Memorial Drive to the left, Main to the right. You can see Fourth Ave across the middle here. Here's the property in question. As you see, it's surrounded by a mix of different uses, specifically along Main Street, primarily commercial, obviously. There are some homes, obviously, the applicant has indicated that one of their siblings or one of their children owns one of those properties. They do have residential, single-family immediately to the right, immediately to the left. The home, two houses to the west, is a multifamily that has three units in it. You have the Rare Restaurant, is a restaurant on the first floor, there's two units above in that. Commercial primarily to the north, and once you go from Fifth Ave further north, that the GBW zone is definitely commercial. When you go south of the property, again, you have mostly commercial along the frontage on Main. There's a couple of homes sprinkled in there, four in particular here. But behind that, between the railroad and the rear of those properties, is primarily residential. I believe one of these is a multifamily, two others are single-family. You have some other single families. These are single families back-to-back. One of them, there's an easement providing access. The other one, I believe it's two homes on one lot. Across the street from that, you have some more single-family residential. All the way down to Evergreen, you have two or three single-family residential. So the GBW zone is intended to be a commercial zone, but in this particular section, it does have a residential flavor along the railroad. This west of those lots that front on Main Street. The property itself, again, is narrow. It's a non-conforming forty-three feet wide, where fifty is required.
Joe, why don't you turn that up so that you have it the same way as the aerial?
Okay.
Just change it.
No problem. So now we're looking at this, north is up on page. It's forty-three feet wide, narrower than what's permitted in the zone. We're proposing to demolish the garage, construct the single-family home as the architect had described. The front setbacks there are ten feet to the face of the porch, eleven point eight one, because the property is not exactly square. It's got a little bend to it. We do have an eight-foot porch, which in the R1 zone would be permitted, and the home itself sits at seventeen point nine eight feet. The other properties surrounding the area, with regard to front yard setback, and we don't have property lines identified on this drawing, but what we do have identified, and what you can see in the aerial, is the set of stairs. There's an existing concrete set of stairs there that kind of go to nowhere. The top of the stairs stop, and then you have grass. You can see those stairs on the survey. The face of those stairs is on the property line. When you look at the area, look at the surrounding properties, the face of those stairs is here, in line with the fronts of most of the other properties in the area, with the exception of the property immediately to the west. So in line with the property line or most of the other properties, this is actually set back almost eighteen feet to the house and ten feet to the porch. This will actually be set back a little further, ten feet further back than the neighbor immediately to the right, then Rare Restaurant on the corner, and multifamily on the corner here. The only other home is the home immediately to the west, which is set back probably another ten feet. We are proposing a driveway up the right side to access the rear of the property. The setback there is nine point nine two feet. That is permitted in the R1 zone if this were a lot in the R1, because the R1 does designate a percentage of width for lots that are undersized in width. So the side setbacks here, if this were in the R1, would be four point three feet and eight point six feet, which this does conform with that. The garage in the rear has full access from the driveway. It has parking for two vehicles. There's room enough in front of the garage for two vehicles, and obviously more room to stack even more vehicles on the property. Based upon the bedroom count, four parking stalls would be required. This more than amply complies with the parking requirements for this particular use. Again, we do model this on the R1 standard. The lot area complies with the R1. The lot width is non-conforming here and would be non-conforming in R1 as well. Fifty feet's required in both. The depth complies. The front yard setback is appropriate and even set further back than the other homes on the street. The side yard setback complies. Building coverage on this lot, if we're looking at the GBW standards, ninety percent. Obviously substantially more intense than what would be allowed in the R1. The R1 is thirty-five percent. We're proposing thirty-five point two five for the home and the garage. That's an overage of about sixteen square feet. It's really a de minimis overage. The lot coverage here, again, GBW zone allows a hundred percent lot coverage. Substantially more intense than what we're proposing or what'd be permitted in the R1. Sixty percent is what you would see in the R1. We're proposing seventy-four point four three on the plan. One thing I did note, we have a walkway up the side to access the back garage. We do want to keep that walkway, but at five feet, it's probably rather wide. We could do a three-foot walkway, provide adequate access to the rear, and reduce that coverage down to seventy percent. The accessory garage does have a second-story apartment. It does comply with the side yard setbacks. In the GBW zone, the side setback is five and the rear is ten. In the R1, it'd be five and five. This complies with both standards. It has a five-foot right setback. The rear setback's actually pretty far, it's fifteen feet. And we have plenty of room and access for AC pads in the rear as well as an outdoor shower. The half-story for the, for the home does comply with the half-story requirements. The accessory garage, as Mr. Beepman had noted correctly, eight hundred square feet on that ground floor, the parking floor is permitted. We're at seven hundred, and the accessory apartment upstairs, six hundred, if this were in the R1 zone. Now, because we're not in the R1 zone, any accessory structure here is limited to a hundred and twenty square feet. That's the variance we were talking about. Hundred and twenty square feet, I believe a fifteen-foot height, basically a shed. So obviously, it's intended to be commercial with a very large building and contemplates maybe a storage shed on the property. In this particular case, what we're asking for is more commensurate with the residential area, where this would be certainly appropriate as defined by your ordinance. Driveways in the R1 do require a three-foot side setback, but I do, you know, point to that this is a narrow lot. At forty-three feet wide, even in the R1, it'd be very difficult to comply with that standard. In the GBW, we do anticipate development right out to the property line, so I think having the driveway on the property line here is certainly appropriate, typical to the commercial areas. And in my review of the area, it's very typical to have structures in this particular area right on the property line. Many of the homes are right on the property line, so I don't think it'll have a deleterious impact upon the neighborhood or the zone if we do have the driveway set as we have it shown. That's it as far as the layout. I don't know if you want to have the board ask questions of this, and then I can go into the design.
I just have a couple of questions. So if, if, as opposed to having a detached garage, if you attach this garage and have it swing around the corner of the home, you would be in compliance with having a principal structure only?
Correct. That would still comply with the coverage. It would then eliminate the variance for having an accessory structure in excess of a hundred and twenty square feet. It would also eliminate any height concern with that, because it would be all one principal structure. one principal structure. This is a more appropriate layout, this is what you would typically see in a residential area, but yes, you could eliminate those non-conformities by connecting.
By separating the two, the principal and the accessory structure, you're creating a little more openness on the site as well, is that...
Correct, a little more light air and open space, a little more spacing between the buildings, having the parking centered inside the lot as opposed to having a driveway that swings around the back and having the parking adjacent to the rear of the lot. So there's certainly some benefits to it.
And let's talk specifically about the property directly to the west, that's the property that you referred to that sits quite a bit back as compared to the rest of...
Correct.
Those, right? So having that space there is going to give some openness and open air to the east side of that property because that dwelling is currently already set back, correct?
Certainly, so you can see the existing garage there, that's at a zero setback, we're proposing fifteen, so that garage will sit about in this area I'm pointing to here, keeping the home, the back of home more in line with the back of the existing home to the west.
And if you were proposing a commercial development on this, you could potentially put that dwelling directly on that west line, correct?
You could put it on the west line, you could put it on the front line.
And you could put it forty-eight feet.
That is permissible height, yes.
Depending on design.
Correct, correct, obviously, we'd have to comply with some other standards, parking and that, which we can, I certainly can discuss with the board when we get to that exhibit.
And you prepared an exhibit, yeah, I figured let's step to that exhibit, you did prepare an exhibit, oh yeah, it's on the back of there. And that's been marked as A1, correct?
Correct.
Was it? That one wasn't, but the one the board...
The one they have one?
Yeah. So again, we're looking, at this point, we're looking northward.
This is, north is up on page, this is the property with a potential footprint that is permissible in the zone. We're permitted to have a zero front setback, we're permitted to have a zero side setback, we're permitted to have a ten-foot rear setback, and we're permitted a ninety percent coverage. So the development of this under the GBW standards allows for a footprint, you know, obviously this large, that would have certainly a much more impact on the neighborhood than what we're proposing.
And when you say impact on the neighborhood, what you're talking about is the residential dwellings that are on either side of this property as well as the rest of that corridor that you referred to in the area?
Correct.
If you could just flip that over one time, just so we can see it again.
Certainly.
So that corridor we're talking about, if you could just show the board from Fifth Avenue down to Evergreen.
Certainly, so we have Evergreen, again, north on page, Evergreen's at the south then, Fifth Avenue's at the north, so you can see in this band here essentially all those properties behind the properties fronting on main, primarily residential. You have 301 Bradley fronting on main, that is more typical GBW-type zoning and design. You have around this property, there is a commercial property immediately north that fronts up on Fifth, you have the old 7-Eleven, you have the Rare Restaurant, and then a mix of other residential uses, some of them have a mix of residential and commercial, but definitely residential uses fronting on main and here, but everything west of there importantly is residential.
I don't have anything else about the layout, I figure then we'll go into the planning and that's...
Certainly.
So Mr. Beekman, as I understand it, this is the engineering testimony?
This is the engineering.
Then we're gonna have some planning testimony.
You got it. Any questions on the engineering? Sort of roll into each other. Change my hat.
Well, there was one point on, yes, about water runoff.
True, I completely forgot, I apologize.
And that was, it's clearly stated that you drain into adjacent properties.
Correct, so the areas that we're showing, draining to adjacent properties primarily are the grassed area next to the garage and in some of the rear, we can certainly amend our plans to show that we are going to fully drain to the street and have no impact on the adjacent neighbors. Specifically speaking, we have a spot elevation next to the garage here at nineteen six five and then nineteen five, so that shows the area from the garage kind of going to the side. We could, drywall's obviously a solution that could capture that, we could put yard drains in, pick that up, so we will certainly amend the plan to comply that there'll be no drainage on the neighbors.
I just wanted to bring that up, we got a lot to go through first to get to that point.
Certainly.
Let's move forward.
Any questions for engineering? Any questions in the board, any questions from general public on engineering? Now I'll turn to a planner.
Now I'll turn to a planner. So, Joe, you've also been hired as the planner on this application, correct?
Correct.
Just been around once, and show everyone your planning side, actually, make sure it's your good side. So from a planning perspective, you've analyzed this and you've looked at the GWB zone, is that correct?
Correct, and I knew that all the time, it's GBW.
I'm sorry.
I call it GWB all day long.
General Business West Zone. And you've analyzed that, but you've also looked at the neighborhoods we talked about, correct?
Correct.
And can you just explain to the board why you think what we're proposing, what our applicant is proposing, is a better alternative than what's permitted in the GBW zone?
Sure. So we are asking for use variance to allow this use in the zone, it's a D1 variance because it's not a permitted use in the zone. We do need to demonstrate that either it's inherently beneficial use, which we're not proposing this is, or that special reasons exist to justify what we're asking for. Special reasons are rooted in the purposes of zoning, found in Section Two of the Municipal Land Use Law, specifically the promotion of the general welfare, purpose one is the purpose which most embodies the grant of a use variance. We identify in this case that special reasons exist and it promotes the general welfare because the site is particularly suited to this use and it promotes the purposes of zoning. What does that mean? So as I've identified throughout here, it's my opinion that this site is, sorry, I lost my place, is particularly suited to this particular site because of the surrounding residential character as well as the character throughout this southern section of the GBW zone. The interior lots west of Main Street in these blocks between Evergreen and Fifth are very residential in nature, and single-family residential dwellings exist immediately to the east and immediately to the west. It's particularly suited also when you compare it to what a permitted use would be and what impact that permitted use might have. So when we look at that, I should have done these the other way, when we take a look at the exhibit, the GBW permits a zero front setback, a zero side setback, a forty-eight-foot height, ground floor parking, so a compliant design that I would anticipate is having a driveway, twenty-foot access into underground parking, not underground, but first ground floor parking, have a small retail component on the first floor, and then likely apartments on the upper floors. Any retail, a thousand square feet or less, does not have a parking requirement in your ordinance, so there would be no parking necessary for the ground floor, so any parking that would be developed in this footprint would be devoted to upstairs apartments, and I would anticipate you'd probably have two stories, if not three, of apartments upstairs. Certainly a much larger building nestled in the center, I should have put these on two different boards because I'm gonna keep flipping. Nestled in the center of all these, you know, smaller residential homes that have been there, again, for a substantial amount of time, and across the street from residential homes as well, I think it would look at a place, and I think the site is particularly suited to this use because of what a conforming use might look like. This proposed use is also far more appropriate because the lot is undersized in width, so developing it commercially certainly does have its challenges, the anticipation would be you have a drive aisle up the right side with perpendicular parking beyond that, you can fit a drive aisle and parking, but it'd be very narrow, you would have to develop right out to the property lines. It also promotes the purposes of zoning, purposes of zoning found in Municipal Land Use Law but also found in your master plan, specifically your 2018 master plan review, identify goals and objectives from your 2014 master plan. One of those goals is an overall goal, the single-family character of the borough is a very important asset, the rehabilitation and infill of the housing stock should be encouraged where appropriate while maintaining the character, scale, and privacy of the established residential neighborhoods in the borough. So certainly an established residential neighborhood, certainly maintaining the character and scale compared to what's permitted in the zone, and provides the privacy, developing it in this fashion where we have a typical accessory apartment above a garage as well as a primary home towards the front. It also promotes the overall objectives from your master plan to encourage the redevelopment and revitalization of vacant and underutilized properties, this is certainly that we brought up right in the beginning, that this garage has been there forever and has a driveway that goes onto two other properties. I've never seen that in all my years where it circles around a single family, you know, a little detached garage, I'm sure it's just been used that way forever, but certainly not appropriate. This is certainly an underutilized property, somewhat blighted, the garage is certainly not a looker, not a great view from the streetscape, and the applicant seeks to clean that up by proposing something that's more appropriate, commensurate with the area. In your status of the 2014 master plan reexam, you do indicate that due to the shortage of parking spaces experienced along main, it's recommended that the borough establish innovative ways to mitigate parking problems. This is fully compliant with parking. A compliant use is retail less than a thousand square feet where no parking is required to be provided, that would demand that that parking be provided out on the street. This provides all the off-street parking on the site off the main street and is fully compliant with extra parking to spare. This also promotes the general welfare, it eliminates non-conformities, again, that garage is a non-conforming use as it stands today, and is non-conforming in rear setback, it promotes a desirable visual environment, obviously, this will be a substantial improvement visually to the streetscape and the area compared to the garage that sits there today. We also reviewed the negative criteria, what's the negative impact that this would have compared to what's permissible in the area, permissible in the zone. So we look at, A, first, reduction in airlight and open space. This zone permits substantially more airlight and open space reduction than what's being proposed, substantially under the GBW requirements, commensurate with the residential zone requirements, and certainly a better impact to the neighbors with respect to airlight and open space. It also is more commensurate with density, so density here, the ordinance permits single-family homes on five thousand square feet in the R1 zone and allows garage apartments, that equates to a density of about seventeen point four dwelling units per acre. We did an analysis of all the residential lots in the zone, or I'm sorry, in the block, so discounting those properties that are only commercial, specifically discounting the commercial property at the northeast corner of the block, the 7-Eleven, and it was actually those two and the Rare, and this particular is on, this particular one, the northeast corner or northwest corner is on three different lots, but when we analyze that, it comes down to that the density of any residential lots in this block are fifteen point nine five. Our proposed density on this lot for two units on this six thousand five hundred, four hundred and fifty-three square foot lot is thirteen point five dwelling units per acre, so it's less than the density permitted in the R1, less than the density that's typical to this block, and certainly appropriate for this location.
And is it also less than the density that you'd be able to do if you put a commercial building?
Yes, certainly less than the density permitted by the GBW zone if we did all apartments upstairs. We look at impact of noise and nuisance, a commercial use will certainly have a much more detrimental impact from increased traffic, people, intensity in the neighborhood, we look at parking, and again, we are fully compliant, so in my opinion, there's no detrimental impact by granting this use variance for this use, it's a more appropriate use at this particular location. If we're at the north end of the GBW where it's all commercial and primarily governmental but commercial type use, I don't think this would be appropriate, specifically, it's appropriate on this lot because of what surrounds here. The second part of the negative criteria is will this substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance? This is a pre-existing underutilized lot in the middle of other single-family uses, I don't believe it'll have any detrimental impact upon the intent and purpose of the zone plan, I believe this is commensurate with the R1 and commensurate with the area and certainly appropriate. So in my opinion, the variances can be granted as requested.
So going back to what you testified to when you first came up as an engineer, you testified that you looked at the old tax maps?
Yes.
This lot has been this size for nearly a hundred years?
From what we could tell, since at least nineteen thirty-one, this lot existed in this shape.
And for, and what did you say, you saw a tax map in nineteen seventy-something where there was another building on the site?
Historic aerial, that showed there was another building immediately west and almost touching this building.
Did you see any other historic aerials that showed anything else in this lot?
No, reviewing the historic aerials from that point forward, they all show the garage existing and different manufactions of cars parked on the lot, it's always been used as a deflector parking lot, which is also not a permitted use.
So for eighty to ninety years, this has been an underutilized lot?
Correct.
And for eighty to ninety years, it wasn't developed as a commercial lot?
Correct.
So...
As I could, from what I could tell from historic aerials.
In light of all of that, if I asked you, what is the biggest driving crux to develop this as a single-family dwelling with a detached garage and garage apartment, what would that be?
The biggest factor is how narrow it is, it's gonna be extremely difficult to develop in a conforming way, that is something that's usable, you know, having a retail space around the corner on Fourth in between other residences is just not going to be an appealing use, it's not, you know, that type of use, office or retail there is just not going to be appropriate, in my opinion.
Anything else?
That's it.
I do have a question, Angie, how many apartments could you fit in roughly in that spot? Two bedroom apartments?
We can fit a ton of apartments, it's a matter of if we provide the parking for them. But if we're basing it on the parking in this exhibit, you know, a hundred and fifty-foot lot, we could fit fourteen stalls here, maybe thirteen with a handicap, so that's six apartments minimum. And I know it's somewhat typically asked for relief on those on the four-story structure.
Okay, I'll just pass the questions. Any other questions, Mr. General?
Yeah, go ahead.
Either one.
So you kind of walked us through a little bit of history. Why would, and again, I am completely ignorant to this, why would, when a plan, when a zoning plan is being drawn up, why would, if those houses were existing historically, why would they be drawn into this, a general business zone as opposed to an R1 zone?
I mean, it's difficult for me to say specifically, obviously, it was not part of that.
Sure.
But there is a mixture of uses, and I think it might have been just for convenience to, everything north of Fifth, obviously, is commercial, it was appropriate, and you do have some sprinklings of commercial all throughout, so you have this corner, this corner, here, this frontage, so it might have been just to avoid a spot zoning issue, to just call it all one and leave it up to the board to determine when it was appropriate to do residential?
You know, the whole thing is a conundrum, right? If you want to have a certain, you know, obviously, the master plan and zoning plan are to achieve a mix between commercial and residential use, so somebody, a group at some time decided that this would be a rational mix, and you're asking us to change the mix, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around all of this, and the chairman raises an interesting question about apartments, particularly, and I'm definitely getting out of my depth here with the issue of affordable housing, because I know that the city will be assessed one day, affordable housing.
If I had to offer anything else, making this a commercial zone because the railroad existed there could also be, you know, a justification, but obviously, residential homes have been here for a hundred years and, you know, live with the railroad, I know I grew up with the railroad thirty feet behind my bedroom.
So I don't, I was not here and don't know the full reason why, how Bradley Beach's zoning came, you know, came about as it did, but typically, you know, a master plan is a community and the planning board's vision for how they want it to look in the future, right? Like how they would, how they want, where they think different things should be in the future. And I'm assuming that the, this area was zoned, you know, GBW because there are, there are commercial use... because there are, there are commercial uses there. And while whoever was making the decisions at that time felt there may have been existing residential uses there, but they probably were not looking to continue those uses in the future, given the location between Memorial Drive and Main Street, you know, the commercial uses around it, the train station, things like that. So that's only, you know, what I can assume the thought process behind it was.
I sound the same issue, just wrapping my head around this, because it is a general business zone. There's a day of that for a reason, for a master plan, to move commercial property along Bradley Beach and to improve and grow the commercial zone. Now, if it starts, that's something else, but that's, the intent is to have it as a commercial zone. I keep hearing it's R1, it's not R1. I don't want hearing about R1, it's not. It's, yeah, I understand what you're trying to do, but it's not R1. And you kind of give me, you give me a scale here. You get a single-family house with a garage apartment, or we can stop a big-ass building onto this property and put all this parking lot, this and that. But that's, it's a 43-foot wide lot. Good luck designing and getting it through sometime in the near future. I just say, I just think it's a difficult lot to develop. I don't like this, it's either or. But I'm not so sure it is either or. It's a, it's a commercial zone. And I'm just, I, I, I gotta ask a, I'm gonna just ask one question to the applicant. Are you going to live here?
Yes, I, yes, I'm gonna retire as soon as I'm filled. I've got 39 years in the DOD, I'm looking to get out, so that's where I'm going.
I understand. And that's probably actually not even germane to the application, it really isn't. I was just curious, so we have people coming here from still moving here and moving in and moving out, and five, five years later, it's something else. So, you know, I have to ask a question, it's not germane to this application. I appreciate you answering. I'm having a rough time with this. I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the size of the property, I'm not comfortable with the garage apartment, the size of that, I'm just not, dumping that in there, now we're locking, we're taking away from the town. Not taking away, we're steering something that's, the zone is commercial, and now we're gonna lock in a property that's residential. So that just automatically starts changing how we look at commercial property growth in the future. Because we just got 401, 301 Main Street, that's a big project. I got sneaky suspicion the town would like to see more of that stuff on Main Street. I really do, and, but I'm right or wrong. I lived here 30 years, and it's a big change, but things change.
In theory, I understand what everybody's talking about with commercial. But in theory, couldn't the applicant develop that piece of property from property line to property in line, put a thousand square feet of retail in, and put his own house upstairs? Which is not going to give you light or air or anything else. You know, it's, it's a conundrum, I agree. But I think it's a less impactful use than putting in a four-story, property line to property line in an area that is surrounded by residential homes unless somebody comes in and buys up all those homes to redevelop them. And with today's prices, it's hard to make sense to redevelop stuff anymore in this town. Dirt's not cheap in Bradley Beach. I just got my textbook today.
I'd like to say something, I actually have two points. One, it seems like that lot has sat empty for quite some time. And it doesn't seem like any commercial people were jumping at the opportunity to turn it into a business. Okay, that being said, I think if people know the town, Giamano's disappeared. But once upon a time, that was a house. I would think the building that Rare in, once upon a time, was a house. I think the houses next to Rare are houses. The place on the corner, a house. So I think that they were, they've become businesses, but they were originally residences that have sort of morphed into these, I don't even know what you'd call them, I don't even know what's in the one anymore. So I, to me, it sort of seems like it's a plus to the town to have something other than an ugly lot. And I don't know if the neighbors are here that are on either side, but we like, you know, because
I'm here.
I kind of know how I feel as living next door, and I had the option. So maybe I shouldn't have said that.
I have to agree with you.
It has its pros, it has its cons, it has difficulty. One thing I didn't like about it, let's see, we're in a GW, B zone, we're in the design of R1. You had to pick a design one way, you're gonna design it. You gotta design it. If it should go through, you have this board, everything would have to be designed back to the R1, motif or style, no matter, with any exceptions, that would be my opinion there. Don't know if it's gonna pass, but that, I didn't like that idea. That, we could play a little bit from column one to column two to make, to make column C. So that was, didn't like that. You know, in the master plan, I was on the master plan committee about seven or eight years ago before that, I don't know, maybe in 2018. And the, and the object is to make Main Street to the railroad commercial. Either apartments, apartment office, I mean, that's the theory. But that's the theory of towns, so when you go to a zone, you gotta think of how it is owned. You know, my opinion, I'm bringing it from here. Anybody else on the board before we open up to public? Questions to the zoner, no, to the planner, engineer? You can, you can mix them, we'll give you a choice, A or B. You don't get 10 minutes, you still only get five.
Thomas J. Joanna, I haven't asked many questions tonight, so she'd get 10. The, Mr. Kishiba, I was wondering, you did the overlay, could you tell me what the width of Lot 706 is to the west?
706 is also 43 feet, that's Lot 13 immediately west of the block.
Great. And then, as we go to the next one, do you have the width of that one?
It's an odd-shaped lot, but at the front, it's 43 feet.
So that was the, that was the standard at that point in time when those lots were developed?
And it appears on that 1931 tax map. They've all been these shapes since 31.
Great, okay. And then, in terms of the existing garage, you stated that it's nonconforming?
Correct.
Is it nonconforming for location or use?
Both.
Okay, and now, the parking lot which was described, is that nonconforming?
To my knowledge, yes, because we don't have a conforming principal use, so you can't have an accessory to a nonconforming principal use.
And then, according to the ordinance of 450-38, it says that off-street parking spaces must be graded, paved, dust-free, durable all-weather, and they must be eliminated. Does that have any of those characteristics?
A portion of it's paved, but there are certainly portions that are not.
Okay, and the spaces are not delineated, right?
They are not. And the portion that's parked on is lawn or bare during.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So both of them are nonconforming, the use of the lot and the lot, and the garage park?
The garage location.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I follow with a question?
Sure.
You'd indicated the spaces aren't delineated. You also looked at aerials?
Yes.
And you said that you saw cars parking there over a long period of time?
Correct, throughout the history of this lot, there's been cars parked in the front of this property on the lot.
So that, that nonconforming use has been habitually on this lot for a long time?
From what we could tell from the store arrows, yeah.
Thank you.
I have just one question for the planner, I guess. Following up from TJ's question, one of the special reasons you gave for the variance to be granted was that it promoted, you know, purposes of zoning and it eliminated nonconformities. And TJ asked you about some of the existing nonconformities on the lot. But the proposed single-family use would also be a nonconformity, is that correct?
Certainly, yes.
So you wouldn't really be, you would just be putting a different nonconformity on the lot?
We would eliminate that existing nonconformity, the zero rear setback, yeah.
I have a question to put in this about.
Sure.
Your plan or other towns?
Yes.
So have other towns after, that are, I'll say Bradley Beach is a legacy town, that have had legacy buildings, a mishmash essentially? Have, has, has a master plan been developed similar to Bradley Beach where they look at what they have existing and say, we would like in the future to move forward? Or is, and change the, the nature of a particular area?
Yes, absolutely.
And so, so we're not unique in doing something like this?
Correct, and you know, there's lots of other towns that, you know, there may be a residential property that existed prior to any zoning that is now in a zoned, non-residential use zone. And they're certainly permitted to continue to exist, but they're now a nonconforming use in the zone.
All right, and let me ask you a follow-up question, but it's gonna be the direct opposite. This just determines how the twister between the analogies. If the owner of the property decided to build a completely conforming commercial structure, would that be contemporaneous? While, while following the zoning plan and the, and the master plan, would that be contemporaneous for a planning purpose to what the street looks like?
I, I don't think I understand your question.
If they build a monstrosity commercial building, which is what they're showing they could build, in your opinion, as a planner, would you feel that that is contemporaneous with the other structures surrounding it, even though we take for granted that it's, that the zoning is, the houses, the residents are not necessarily conforming with the zone?
Well, I think that, you know, we were shown a square on a piece of paper without really any, without much detail on what a fully built-out, conforming use would look like on the lot. So I don't think that a fully conforming use would probably look like just a completely squared, you know, covering of a lot. I think that there would probably be, you know, some consideration taken into the architecture and design of it. They would have to provide for, you know, things like drainage and stormwater and lighting and parking and all of those other things. Or else they'd probably be here in front of, or in front of the planning board.
Are you, are you, is your question, would that commercial property look out of place?
Correct.
That's what I'm saying. Now, obviously, a gigantic shoebox is, as shown here, would look out of place.
Right.
Or is there, is there a possibility that you could design something that would not make the tiny building at Lot 11 and whoever's on Lot 13 feel like they're boxed in by?
I'm, I'm not an architect, but I think that someone could design something.
Going back to his first question, in this line or two of other towns, have this happened in many towns close by?
Most of them.
Where they've taken a, in a, in a zone like this and get new building in the mixed zone?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, this zone has existed for some time, and I think the transition of this area from residential to commercial has been gradual over time. And that is something that's certainly common in other places.
If you could go drive 110 north?
Exactly.
But all that being said, our, the job of the board is to apply?
Right, but we're also looking, you need information to make your decision.
Understood, but, you know.
Right.
We apply the ordinance of?
Now, one case to one law.
And I think, you know, there before you, for a D1 use variance, which is really the highest burden of proof, they need to prove that this site is particularly suited to the use that they're proposing. And so ultimately, this board needs to decide if they feel, if you feel like the testimony you've heard and what the application is providing you, you feel like this specific site in the general business west zone is particularly suited to a single-family home. And you might feel it is because there's, you know, other single-family homes around it as their planner testified to, or you may feel it's not because, you know, it is a commercial zone and the intention is to generate more non-residential uses in that area.
Mr. Frederick?
Sir?
You bought a lot?
Yes.
With the intent to retire, that was your testimony?
Yes, sir.
Well, you bought it, you bought a commercial lot for your retirement to roll the dice with?
To come before a board? To hope that it gets changed to build your retirement house? We bought the lot, we didn't realize, and I'll correct myself, we didn't realize it was a commercial zone, a lot.
I didn't know either.
So I just have?
The residents didn't know either.
Yeah, I didn't know either.
I'm sure a lot of them.
I'm sure they didn't know.
I just have, I just have a suggestion. Chairman Rosenberg, that, I know, so I think we had questions of the planner, and I know there's, it comes back to the board, and there's some discussion and comments, but I also, it sounds like the board would be interested in comments from the public. So maybe we go to that before?
That's okay with Mr. Beaton?
Yeah, are we finished with public questions, Mr.?
Yeah, I guess so, nobody else raised their hand?
Sure, absolutely.
Would the general public like to make comments, questions?
Yes.
So for those who haven't been to a meeting before, you're gonna come up, just state your name and your address, raise your right hand, and I'll swear to you, okay?
Tulsa, Cameron, 702, 4th Avenue.
You swore a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm in Lot 11, which is a private, nice, beautiful residential home. I did not know it was commercial on that lot when I bought the home. And after that lot that's empty is another beautiful home that was put there or redone. I don't know about my neighbor, but I can tell you, I would not want a massive structure 10 feet from my home that would force me to sell it. That's what we would do. I'm all in favor of the one-family house going there. Especially, I know they're gonna live there. They do have property on Main Street. So they wanna live in Bradley, and they wanna put their home there. So I'm definitely in favor of the one-family going there, without a doubt. And I know an exception could, could be made, hopefully, hopefully. They're good people and they wanna live there, that's a fact. And I love Bradley Beach. For a week, built 706 right there. So I know Bradley Beach. And I lived there for a while. And after I sold the building, I decided to buy a home there, and I chose that home. I didn't need a big home, I didn't need to be a lot from the beach. I'm very happy where I am, and I hope it works out for you.
Anybody else?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Kristin Depp, I live at 706, bought that up, that's Lot 13. And I bought the home only two years ago, I'm sorry.
You swore a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
It's Kristin?
Depp.
Please, Paula.
D-E-P-P-E.
Thank you.
So I bought the home two years ago, had the world's worst realtor, who I had no idea that it was a business zone at all, just saw a beautiful, beautifully redone house. just saw a beautiful, beautifully redone house, move in ready, so, and I love the neighborhood. Joe's house is really nice, that's sort of, you know, and there's houses all surrounding it that, when I was looking at when, when the houses were built, mine was built in 1919. All the houses are over 100 years old on that block. There's six single-family houses right on that block on Fourth Avenue, that's not counting the houses right on Main Street and the, and all the back houses. So there's mostly houses on that, on that block. If anybody would actually drive down the block, you could see that it's mostly a residential block. It would look horrific to have a four-story, big, huge apartment building stuck next to two very modest and, and nice, neat houses. To have a big, huge structure next to it would just be horrendous. It just wouldn't be in keeping with what the block looks like, so that's my feeling.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Say your name, your address.
Paul Johnson, 409 Main Street.
You swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have, I currently own Lot 8 and 7 on this particular block, and I've lived here for 60 years. My family previously owned the property that Frederick purchased from us, so I could probably answer some of your questions that you're not familiar with. Initially, when we were selling these properties going back four years ago, which would have been 409, 407, 411 and a half, 405, 405 and a half, and 704, we attempted to get developers to have some interest, but we could not find any developers that were interested in developing commercially. So that's why we kept the properties as is and sold residential. I, I, what Mrs. Depp said was, was correct. I don't, I don't believe an apartment building of that nature, four stories, would fit in that area. That's, that's been vacant with the exception of the single-family home, which was there back in the 70s, and that was there for quite a long time before it burned out. But other than that, I think the apartment building just, just wouldn't fit in that particular area. I think residential is, is the way to go.
Good evening, Jane Denoble, 612 Third Avenue.
You swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and I proceed?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I know Dennis, you had mentioned about the lot 43 by 150, and you thought it was a little strange. So I took the liberty of going to the STL portal and looking at the neighborhood, and I found that 703 Ford is 43 by 150.
It's shown on the.
Yeah, okay, so you saw that. So it is interesting that they're all 43 by 150. The next-door neighbor is 43 by 100, so it's a little smaller, and then the other one is 51 by 40. So it is kind of a mumbo jumbo, but it is all homes. So I think this does fit the neighborhood. I think maybe we should revisit this ordinance, especially the streets running east to west, because what we're seeing when we first worked, I was on the planning board, when we first worked on it, some of these homes are rundown. We're seeing these homes being renovated. So now that gives them maybe another 40, 50 years to survive there, so they're not gonna go away. So I think, I know they're entitled to this apartment building, but I don't think it fits. And I think what they're applying for does fit the neighborhood. Thank you.
May I make a comment and just re- applaud? I, I think we're getting a little mixed up here. Nobody's proposing apartment building.
No, but I'm saying what they're, I'm just saying what they're entitled to.
No, I, they're, they're not, they're entitled to anything they can put legally on that lot.
Right.
And legally on that lot, and just nobody's putting a four-story apartment building there. And I only get this conflated if we're talking about a single-family home, the garage apartment, in a, in a commercial zone that is, is not zoned, it's not deemed for the zone. That's all we're talking about. Now, where it goes 10 years from now, five years from now, a year from now, I can't say. None of us can say.
Right, but I'm saying you have to weigh the detriment and the benefits.
No, but I totally understand. I'm just saying, wait, I care about this, this apartment building, apartment building.
Right. Well, even with this.
You're not getting the legal block.
Even with this home.
But you have to ask all informations, questions you have to ask.
I appreciate it. That guy's.
What's that do, Chris?
Okay.
Tom Schinko, 612 Third Avenue, to Mr. Denoble's point, and, oh, yes, Mr. Frederick.
You swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Nice proceeding, thank you.
That was a very good point Mr. Denoble made and was raised by Ms. Bell, is that when it was done, those properties were severely deteriorating. And both of those units have been renovated, and we're gonna see more renovation, as we always do. But I, I just wanted to point out a couple things from the economic development plan element of the master plan, which has been submitted to the planning board. In the recommendations, section on page 13, it says, "To develop the character of Main Street by discouraging types of uses that do not fit in with the downtown quarter. First-floor residential and single-family homes along Main Street." Doesn't say single-family homes on side streets. So, and, and this wording is similar to wording in the 2014 master plan. So this, we really do need to look at the housing elements on the side streets. I agree with this. It shouldn't be on Main Street, but on the side street, it's a, it's a whole different look. Also, with regard to density, because as Mr. Kishuba commented on, the, the parking determines the density. Also in this, in, on page 14, item B, it says, "To set density standards for the GB and GBW zones based upon a square footage of the lot, giving the public a better understanding of the possible density and bulk that can be expected of a new development." So there, there's a number of issues here that clearly Strategic Planning Committee and the planning board is looking at. And, and these are all very, very, very good points. But, you know, these people are here for a use variance based upon the fact that the existing character is single-family homes. They don't, they don't wanna build an apartment building, but they may not have much of a choice, and I admire the fact that they use the R1 standard as the hybrid. I've owned a building at 401 Main Street where rare is, it was never a single-family home. It's always been a store or a restaurant or a deli tested with apartments above. But that being said, I looked to purchase that lot before Mr. Johnson did, but I couldn't use it as a parking lot because I wouldn't need to get a variance. Mr. Johnson purchased the lot, not Paul's father. And the lot has been in a serious disrepair for a very long time, and I've always been very concerned about what could be there. And I'm very excited about the fact that it would be a house, maintain that streetscape along the street. And I believe you're gonna see many, many more house requests in this zone. It may be good for you to include in your annual report to the planning board that you got this request, because the planning board obviously is looking at the GBW zone. But I'd like to point out the economics of it. What I like about this application is it's a grassroots application. It's a resident. It's somebody who owns the property. It's not a corporation. It's not an LLC that's looking to build multiple apartment units, live in North Jersey, and rent them out. So I think that's a very important factor. If this gets developed as an apartment building, it's gonna be an LLC, it's gonna be a corporation. It's much harder to finance also, which is another consideration. But I would like to point out that in the 600 block on streets very nearby, this is the 600 block, 606 Third Avenue, which is a front house and a back house on a 50 by 150 lot, just sold in October for $1,725, one block east of this zone. And there's another house that was just built in the 600 block, 605 La Raina, which I spoke with the agent, scheduled to close November 29th, 2021. The list price is $1,006. Now that's in the 600 block. So the 700 block may be the affordable block for people, and maybe we should look to. You'll be setting a standard now, and I'll be happy to submit these into evidence if you.
So I'm, I'm gonna state right now, this is not relevant. Economic factors are not relevant. So the board is not to, not to take those comments into consideration on the decision you make regarding the application.
Mr. Chairman, I've put up with this vacant lot for 25 years. It's been a mishmash of parking. It's been miscapped. It, it, there's trucks in and out of there. I don't know who's putting things in there. There's no CO. I'm looking for stability in my neighborhood, and, and I think this would give it to us. And I believe it's the highest and best use for this property. Thank you very much.
I was gonna add one, one thing, also, Mr. Cohen made reference to the report that the Board of Adjustment does, and we've, and we make recommendations. And we do that in January, but.
We won't be here.
Well, the report would still be put together.
We're done then.
Thank you.
Send the report, probably. Wouldn't be hard in January to send the report.
Mr. Schuck.
I was just letting Mr. Kietrich finish.
Thank you. You're one of the few that does that. I appreciate that.
William Schuck, 110 Fifth Avenue, Bradley Beach.
You swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and I proceed?
I do.
Thank you.
It's been mentioned by people, the master plan, master plan. Yes, the master plan does call for the development of underdeveloped properties. The GBW zone has been changed to GB West, but it's always been a general business zone for over 30 years that I know of. So why, you know, we, we discuss R1, and then we discuss GB zone, where we could go 40 feet, whatever it is. Whatever it is you're gonna build, it's in a general business zone. And the master plan is looking into promoting more business. The only reason you have the residential above the commercial is to promote more foot traffic so that these businesses can survive. And this is why we have the GB zone. Yes, the economics thing was brought to the planning board, but it also specifically states general business west, and that's the entire block. Not just Main Street, it's the entire block. Whether you go east, west, it doesn't make a difference if you go north or south. That whole area is general business west. That's all.
Well, yeah, you can ask Christine a question. We're in an open question period right now.
Can you explain, Mr. Cohen talked about documents provided by groups that are planning, and I'm not trying to mischaracterize it, but I'm trying to get a sequence of events, and what? Are, are the, are the, are the people that are looking at the documents that Mr. Cohen created, are they looking at the plan to change it? Or are they, I, I'm just trying to understand what's going on here?
So, our recommendation of the Strategic Planning Committee in 2020 was to create an economic development plan element of the master plan, which is one of the optional plan elements under the municipal industry law that a municipality can adopt. And so this past year, that was done, and really the purpose of the economic development plan was to look at what existing industries were in Bradley Beach, the type of labor pool in Bradley Beach, and really try to plan to have, how to increase economic potential and opportunities within Bradley Beach. And there were, you know, industries that were identified for growth in the future that the Strategic Planning Committee would like to see in the planning board, and then recommendations for how to, how to promote economic development in Bradley Beach are also in the plan. Because the master plan belongs to the planning board, really, the Strategic Planning Committee developed this document, but then, you know, it goes to the planning board because they'll really take ownership of it. So the planning board provided, you know, input, recommendations, made some changes. It's still a draft plan. The final plan, the planning board, I think, intends to adopt it at their December meeting before they no longer insist either. But that's, that's what that document is.
So it's more of a little wish list, too?
Mm-hmm.
More, it's, it's opinion, wish, and hope.
It's, you know, as part of the, the master plan, it's kind of the economic vision for the future of Bradley Beach. How to promote economic development within the town.
Confuse you more?
Yeah, some more. I'm stuck. I think we're all stuck here to weigh, I think, there's pros and cons on both sides of this, this measure.
So before, did you wanna?
I would like to have a closing argument.
I'll get the closing argument. Back, back up a little bit. I'm, I'm going back a little bit. I got some questions going back to the building, so before we get to the closing argument. There was some statements said and presentation by engineer, architect, planner. If this should go through, we gotta make sure the house is all built as an R1 unit. That's, no matter what. None of this, we're gonna take a look from column A and B, back everything down. The coverage on some of these sidewalks, gotta have a back, you got a driveway, 100, 100 feet long. You gotta figure a way to use that path to the back of the house, give us some more coverage back.
Chair Rosenberg, sorry for interrupting, but I would, I think the two things that stood out to me was the height. I would recommend, you know, if you act in favor of this application, that they have to meet the height requirement of the R1, so reduce it a foot, and the other was.
So 35 feet?
35.
The other was the driveway was along the property line, and I believe they said, you know, that's in a more commercial zone, but I think the driveway needs to be set back from the property.
That's what I was saying. Everything gotta go to R1.
That, that. It's because of the narrowness of the.
Narrow with the lot. Maybe make the house two feet smaller.
I mean, we're only at, what are we, 9.9 feet?
We're talking seven feet from the standard lot.
Yeah, but I have to ask a question by engineer. Yes, how wide can, how wide can the driveway be? Is, is, there's a minimum driveway width, isn't there? Eight feet.
We gotta figure how to do it. I mean, you know, we, we, you know, I'm, I'm trying to.
The side setback's 9.9. If we did an eight-foot-wide driveway immediately adjacent to the home, that would provide a driveway setback of 1.9 feet. Okay. But we are a 43-foot-wide lot, so we could also move the dwelling 0.7 feet to the left, to the west. Under R1 standards, an undersized width lot is allowed to reduce that side setback. So we can go to 0.7 and get a side setback of 2.6 feet to the driveway.
Can they confirm that?
1.9 plus 0.7, because we can go to 4.3 from 5. So we can move it 0.7, add the 0.7 on the other side. So we can move it point seven, add the point seven on the other side.
And then I would recommend landscaping between the driveway and the neighbors.
Landscaping, a water well, you know, a drywall.
Drywall. The drywall.
Hundred percent drywall.
No, exactly. We can do a drywall. We can certainly comply with the height. And I think we could provide the two point three feet. I would call it two foot three inch planted strip.
Try and cut the coverage back a little bit, percentage.
Just want, let's talk about the driveway again.
Yeah.
What would be the setback?
The driveway setback would be two point two five feet.
Does that fit with the percentage?
It'll actually reduce the impervious coverage. I don't know what, how much it's gonna reduce, but it will reduce.
Was that the forty, the seven feet reduction of width? Is that the right percentage number?
But percentage, in my, I asked Christine, I don't think the driveway setback reduces by a percentage. I think just the side setbacks. I don't know if I made correct.
Would that be the right number, Christine?
I believe what...
But you have to make it conform.
And what I'm, my point is, we do have a narrow lot here. We do have some constraints. So I think at two point two five feet, we're providing something. We can certainly provide a roll of arborvitae. I think we're meeting the intent.
I think that, you know, the setback, so it's just not right on the property.
And I'd like to, I think we should have around either fencing in the back or, or planting all around in the back of the house.
We would provide a landscape buffer, I believe, along the side. We wouldn't do it in the front yard. We'd do it along the side alone. So you're saying fencing around the back of the property?
Yeah, someone come from one yard to the other.
Yeah, we had planned to put vinyl fencing. There's currently vinyl fencing.
They could put a gate to the sun with that lot, right?
You might want to consider vinyl fencing instead of landscaping to give you more room.
The problem in a two-foot-three-inch strip, putting arborvitae in there, they're gonna be fighting the arborvitae.
That's what I'm getting at.
Having to cut them back, right?
If you did a vinyl fence there, you negate that, that problem down the road.
I have, just thinking about it in my own brain, you know, like talking to you, you know, and we're asking questions to try and get this in. If the rest of the board does, I'm just talking for me. I think to do this properly, I'd ask for a continuance and bring us a finished plan with all these numbers and showing the planting, showing the fence, showing everything. That's my, that's, that's my, my opinion. I think you, you know, if this goes forward, I think that would be a smarter way for the board to make a real clear decision.
You got just the house.
You got just the house. You got just the height. You got a... On a good project apartment, you know, you got a plug. So I like to see it finished. Because we go, now you got a building department that's got very modern and very technical. So if we don't give it to them technical, it's gonna, it's gonna get thrown back to the new board right away. Well, you gotta show us what you're gonna do. You're gonna drop it. You're gonna, you can't, but by law on Bradley Beach, you can't change the land.
No, we're, no, we wouldn't be changing the grid.
Can't change the grid.
It wouldn't be changing, changing the grid.
What?
Yeah. We have two minutes to discuss? Yeah.
We got two minutes.
Two minutes. Thank you. And do we know what the continuance would be, indeed?
It would be the sixteen because of four hours.
Yes, we need, we need the plans in two weeks. Oh, wow.
Okay, I'll talk to you about that. That driveway's gonna be hard. Figure it out. Talked to my clients. We'd like to carry the application. We will submit, revise plans. We understand they have to be in within two weeks. I did talk to the professionals, and they said they can get it done.
Okay, I make a motion then that we carried this application till the next meeting without, without notification. Second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor. Any names? No. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion to be adjourned till the next meeting.
Six second. Bring your backpack, guys.